I'm going to call the city council regular meeting for Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, to order. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Kristi Malchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Hornish.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Present.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Ramiro Valderrama.
Present.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, we do have a quorum. Deputy Mayor Moran, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, the agenda is approved. Next, we'll have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM at a business day to Melanie Anderson, our city clerk, at manderson@smamish.us. Please be aware, council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. We're awaiting the sign-up sheet here. No one signed up? Wow, that's a first. Is there anyone that would like to give public comment outside of the public hearing? We will have a separate comment period for the public hearing, so if you're here to make testimony there, you want to make sure that your testimony is part of the public record at that time. Go ahead, Mary.
Hello, my name's Mary Victor, and I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Smamish. And just to clarify, the development regulations are not a public hearing. This is just public comment, right? Okay, so that's why I'm speaking during public comment. I also handed you guys a sheet because I had emailed in. "I'm here tonight to ask you to change two words." It's actually the same word in two places. I want it to be changed from five feet down to four feet. And it's in the clearing and grading permit. So on the front thing that I've given you, that's the clearing and grading regulations from Redmond. They don't allow clearing and grading in a critical area without a permit. And we have code implemented for that, which I would like you to adopt with the permanent development regulations tonight. You have excellent staff. They've done a lot of work. It's really good code. I'd like you to adopt it. And if for some reason you don't adopt it, I'd like you to at least stop that sentence which I've highlighted in red. And then the two words are from five feet to four feet for excavation. They're in the existing code. And it may sound like a small thing, but it's actually a loophole and a gap. So right now, the code reads, it's someone, I'm 5'7". Someone could come with a digger and dump trucks, and they could make a wall that's this tall, so even taller than this, five feet. And they literally could just leave it unsupported and never do anything with it. So you might have water coming out, or having it falling down, or having it doing something to a neighbor next to them or below them, and that's not a good thing. They could do a rock wall or a rocker up to four feet without a permit to brace it, but you'd still have a one-foot gap. So we have a problem that you allow a five-foot cut with no support, and then we have a problem that you, if you want to avoid the permit thing, there's a gap between what's allowed and what you can do. So the suggestion is, and it's very simple, and I believe staff supports it, you can ask them when they're here, just to change the five feet to four feet in the two places marked. It's very simple, and then that way it would get rid of the loophole and the gap. And if you think it's not important, if you live somewhere on a steep slope or somewhere that's near a critical area, you really don't want people cutting and slicing and taking dirt away because it does impact things. And if it's never supported, it causes problems over the short or the long run. And the nice thing is, is so clearing and grading is either cuts, which are excavations, or fills. The code is properly written for fills. It gets the support. It's just the excavations there's that little loophole for. And there are people that thread that and do that. I know that they've heard me speak because I started this in October with a bunch of their comments. Maybe you remember LeBron James and the fences. So I've had a bunch of comments, and a lot of those have been integrated or they're getting addressed somehow, but this one didn't. I think it's important to do. It's tiny tonight. Please just amend your motion. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Karen?
Karen Herring, 23684 Southeast 32nd Way. I'd like to thank staff for working so hard on this. I know that some of my comments have been put in option one. I'm a fan of option one and ask you to choose that one. I also want to ditto everything Mary said. I live on a property that is a critical area. And when development happens upslope from us, we pay for that damage on our property. So protect our property, which is a wildlife habitat. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the public during public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of what I think was 7-0, the consent calendar is approved. Okay, next, we'll move to presentations and proclamations. This evening, we have a special recognition. A Smamish business owner, Jeff Jarman of Plateau Motor Auto Repair, is going to be presented recognition by Detective Bill Albright. Oh, nope. Well, and we have our, and we have our police chief, Chief Bennett. Oh, sorry.
Yes, we saw the minutes, and we had sent a notice saying that the name was wrong and the business is wrong, and we don't want to have it recognized.
Well, no, goodness, no. So please tell us.
Well, it's Kohani Service Center.
Okay.
Also known as the Chevron. And it's a family-run business for 19 years, and we'd like to recognize Brad Hemmener. Brad and his family business, like I said, have been 19 years, and even before that area became incorporated by Smamish, he has been a positive factor for law enforcement. I've been the detective here for 18 years, and a lot of times when we have Smamish victims victimized where the cars are broken into, credit cards are used. They were going to the service station there and filling it up with the credit cards. Brad, on his own accord, I believe he was about $6,000 he spent for video camera systems to put over the pumps. And he wasn't even part of the city yet, and we made several arrests because of what he did. But that's not what I'm here for today. So last year, we had a Smamish resident who lost her husband. And he was a sole income earner for the family, and they had, have six children, from the age two to somewhat in high school. So Smamish PD, with the help of the chief and some people in the community, we got together to help this family in their loss. And we also wanted to get the family to the shop with a cop in Woodinville. The problem was, the car that the husband left her was not in very good shape. In other words, it wasn't safe. So I approached Brad, and I asked him, I said, "Hey, you can turn this down or not, but if we, as a Smamish officers, can pool the money together for the parts, are you willing to do the service, provide the labor?" He immediately said, "No problem. I'll do that, and we'll throw in some, some parts as well." Well, I went on vacation, and then Detective Dodd was taking over contact with Brad. And I learned that he had fixed the car, as he said he would. The problem is, he wouldn't take money from anyone. He absorbed the cost for the whole thing, and I believe it was about $5,000. And Brad said, "It's not perfect, but it's safe." So we wanted to recognize him because this is an example of a businessperson who has his heart for the community, which he provides a service for. And so we'd like to give him an accord. Chief?
Chief's crying. I'd also like to recognize Detective Tracy Dodd as Detective Alden. They're being modest in the whole story, the tireless efforts they have done with this family, with contact and contacting Brad. It's been amazing for a while, and six, almost 130, because it's you. That's a lot of kids. Brad, can't thank you enough for how much you did for that family. We appreciate it both for the city. And we'd like to present you with this plaque to the Kohani Chevron Service Center. Congratulations for your.
That's always a good way to start off your meeting. Our next order of business is a proclamation for the Affordable Housing Week for 2019, which is May 13th through the 17th. And we have Paul Quinn from Sophia Way that is going to come up here and read our proclamation for us.
Thank you. Good evening. Whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities of opportunity. And whereas studies have found that each $100 increase in median rents results in a 15% increase in homelessness in metro areas and a 39% increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs and rural areas. And whereas the most recent point-in-time count found 6,320 people in King County sleeping outdoors without shelter in January of 2018. And 782 families, 782, are considered housing insecure because they are spending more than half their income on rent and utilities. And whereas the combined cost burden of housing plus transportation can be substantially reduced by locating affordable housing opportunities in proximity to transit. And whereas the all-home community identifies affordable housing as a critical component of making homelessness rare, brief, one-time. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas the Association of Washington Cities determined that enhancing efforts address housing shortages and affordability was a critical priority for the 2019 legislative session. And whereas united in an effort to raise public awareness, communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week efforts to inform the public of the critical need to preserve and increase affordable housing in our communities. And whereas the city of Smamish endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week. And in doing so, recommits itself to ensuring that our community thrives with opportunity and that all people in it live with dignity in safe, healthy, and affordable homes. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Smamish does hereby proclaim the week of May 13th through 17th, 2019, as Affordable Housing Week.
Thank you. Okay, so our next order of business is a public hearing. This is an ordinance amending chapters 14A.05, 14A.110, or one, sorry, 14A.10, and 21A.15 of the City of Smamish Municipal Code relating to transportation concurrency and level of service for road segments and corridors. Mr. City Manager.
So I'm waiting for, actually, I was going to turn it over to our Acting Public Works Director, Cheryl. Run through a presentation first.
Yes, we are waiting on Victor Salman, who the council has asked to be present. He thought the topic wouldn't be up till 7:30, so we are trying to contact him. So I'm not sure if you can change the order of your hearings. Let me, let me try to get a hold of him.
Okay.
If you can hold for a minute.
Oh, Kristi?
Yep. Go ahead.
Continue with the, I know that he's delayed, but can we continue with the public hearing portion until he arrives?
Ramiro, I'm sorry, I'm having a trouble hearing you. What was that?
I was asking if, I know that he is delayed coming, but could we continue with the public hearing portion, or is he critical for the public hearing piece as well?
Yeah, we, we could. I'm just curious if, I don't, if staff's PowerPoint might assist in the public hearing for those that wanted to make comment. That's what I'm saying, is have them do the presentation. But I, you know, I'm assuming, we can ask questions then after the presentation. I would say probably hold your questions, and then we can ask them of Victor, if we have questions specific to Victor.
Yeah, if we can continue, go, just to keep.
We're working on it. They've got up the, the presentation right now.
All right, yeah. I can't get the presentation here.
It's the one, it's the one that's in your pocket, though. They've got it up, so we're, we're rolling.
All right.
Do you want to go ahead and dive into it?
Yep, sounds great. Good evening, Mayor Malchow and members of the council. My name is Doug McIntyre. I'm the transportation planner with the Department of Public Works. And Cheryl Passon had to step out for a second, but to my right is Josh Anderson, our traffic modeler with DEA. And I will be here to answer questions along the way. But first, we do have a really quick, high-level presentation, and then, sorry. Okay, so the order of events for this agenda item, again, quick presentation. We will open it up for question and answer from the council, and then ask that the council open the public hearing and take testimony from the public, and then continue the hearing until May 21st. And as part of a kind of a high-level overview of the process that we've been through, back in mid-September of last year, council adopted the intersection concurrency policy. And then following that, on November 20th, council adopted emergency ordinance O-2018-477, which added in segments and corridors to the concurrency program on an interim basis. And that's what the city's been operating under currently, and those interim regulations expire on June 1st. So following the emergency ordinance, our planning commission was brought up to date on what was happening. They received a presentation about the segments and corridors concurrency program. And then to comply with the GMA requirement of 60-day hearing after passing an emergency ordinance, council then opened a hearing on January 15th of this year and took testimony from the public on the emergency. Following that, the planning commission then held a hearing and submitted a recommendation to city council for the permanent regulations, which are before you in this agenda packet. The planning commission recommendation is also part of the packet for your review. And then tonight, we are here for the public hearing on the proposal, and then, if needed, subsequent dates on this slide, which was developed at the end of last week, we show May 14th and May 21st as potential extra dates for this topic. So now I'll just give you a look at what has happened since the emergency ordinance. So the revisions really focused in on chapters 14A.05, 1410, and then 21A.15 of the Smamish Municipal Code. That established, again, as interim regulations, the road corridor and segment level of service standards. And those are based on a volume-to-capacity ratio and apply to principal and minor arterials throughout the city. And for corridors, the V-over-C ratio, as it's known, is proposed as 1.1, and for segments as 1.4. So the corridors and segments have to be less than or equal to 1.1 and 1.4. In addition to those more substantive edits, staff proposed administrative edits where we cleaned up some references, cleaned up a few other things, added in requirements for pre-applications for concurrency, TCRs, Traffic Concurrent Review, applications, and then also added in a legal edit suggested by our city attorney for how we run the concurrency test procedures. So those were highlighted in your packet in the red line exhibit with a gray highlight. And then we'll also go into the specifics here. The green highlight is what was added since the emergency, just for transparency there. But again, focusing in on the various chapters that I alluded to earlier, and these are the specific sections. I won't go through all of the edits. If there are specific questions, we can certainly dive into them. But again, some, the intent was to establish the concurrency program to include corridors and segments. The, let's see, if there are no questions on that, we can go ahead and open the, the hearing.
Very good.
Or take questions, sorry.
Do you have a question? Okay. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have, I assume we have someone signed on? Okay, first, we have Kevin Jones, followed by Tom Mullins and James Eastman.
Hi, I have a slide I'm going to be speaking to, so I'll let Melanie bring that up. Okay. This is, this is, hi, Kevin Jones, Transport Group.
Kevin.
Microphone.
Kevin Jones, Transport Group.
Is it on?
No.
Yeah. There we go.
Kevin Jones, Transport Group. For the record, I'd like to submit my memo to council dated January 15th. I'll do that after my remarks. In it, and in earlier memos, I highlight a major defect in the proposed volume-to-capacity or VC standards, namely, the significant underestimates of existing capacity. But tonight, I want to make this important point graphically using Sahali Way as an example. So this, this graph here, this shows the relationship between speed and flow rate, our vehicles per hour. It's a simple, but it's, it's a quite important principle. The graph is simple, is a simplified version of an exhibit from the Highway Capacity Manual. And what it shows is, as the flow rate, that is, the number of cars increases, speed begins to decrease. This is represented by the green portion of the, of the graph. Maximum volume, or what we describe as capacity, is reached when the flow rate first begins to decrease, and is represented by the orange dot on the board. As traffic demand continues to increase, both the flow rate and speed decrease. This is represented by the red portion of the graph. This principle applies to any roadway, including all arterials in Smamish. So as an example, I thought I would, I would speak to northbound Sahali Way. This is segment nine in the concurrency ordinance. And the city estimates the capacity of this segment of Sahali at 951 vehicles per hour. That's represented, again, by that orange dot. Yet greater volumes have been measured. In fact, based on traffic counts collected by the city, a three-day average of 1,256 vehicles per hour, that's that light blue figure, were recorded in April 2016, and over 1,400 on May 2nd of 2017. This proves that the 951 number is erroneous because a maximum volume can't be less than a measured volume. This is fundamental in traffic engineering. The 951 number comes from the HCM and applying certain adjustments. But as a final step, you must ground-truth that number in light of measured volumes. This critical step was not taken. If you look at the volume measured in May 2017, you see that the actual capacity is at least 48% greater than the ordinance, and possibly even more. So setting a threshold 40% greater than an underestimated capacity is really meaningless. It doesn't reconcile the error. And this isn't isolated to Sahali either. Other examples include northbound Issaquah Pine Lake Road, this is segment 33, and eastbound Issaquah Falls City Road, segment 39, where capacity is at least 44% to 49% greater than the ordinance. And there's other examples on these roadways, as well as Doody Hill Road, Eastlake, Smamish, the list goes on. But this illustrates a major defect in your standards, where existing flow rates significantly exceed estimated capacity. And when you underestimate capacity, you create false failures. So what does this mean for Sahali? The correct capacity number is certainly no less than 1,403 vehicles per hour. If you were to adopt this number, this corridor would not fail concurrency. If you continue to use the 951 number.
I do need you to wrap up.
I will.
Quickly, thank you.
You're unnecessarily creating a false failure. You're then looking at extraordinarily costly and disruptive improvements, as disclosed in the staff report, like adding a third lane and right-turn pockets for a two-and-a-half-mile segment to cure a failure that would not exist with a more appropriate capacity number. As I've stated previously, the best course, given these fundamental flaws.
I do need you to wrap up here.
And the false failures they create is to let the interim VC standards expire, rather than going down the path of seeking remedies for concurrency failures that do not exist. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tom Mullins, followed by James Eastman.
Tom Mullins with the Issaquah School District. On behalf of the Issaquah School District, we appreciate the city's continued partnership as we work to provide school facilities to serve our growing student population. As you know, the Issaquah School District, along with the Lake Washington School District, provided written comments to the city on April 1st on several matters related to citing, school citing. We included in that letter a request that the city consider an exemption for schools from the city's traffic concurrency requirements. We would like to reiterate that request tonight as the city reviews proposed amendments to the concurrency ordinance. Our concern is, without an exemption, there may be instances where it would be impossible to build the necessary school capacity to support the permitted residential development. As you know, we build schools to serve the residents permitted by the city and by other jurisdictions in our district. New residential development generates both new traffic and new students. A newer, expanded school facility simply provides the infrastructure needed to support the new development. We hope that the city will consider a concurrency exemption for public school projects for this reason. We appreciate your consideration of this matter. Thank you for your time in supporting the Issaquah and Lake Washington School Districts.
Thank you. So, Mr. Eastman, walking up to the podium, if there's anyone else that would like to address council during this public hearing, you can just line up along that wall.
James Eastman, begging properly, along 196th Avenue Northeast. It's probably the only time you'll ever hear me up here tell you I don't really know how I feel about something, but I don't really know how I feel about this concurrency. And here's why. I have a lot of property down along the parkway. And when we went to use the trail all summer long every day, it was like dodging traffic and trying to get across the trail with my family. And I thought to myself, man, I sure wish concurrency was in place for the parkway. And I understand why it's not, but then I revert back to 15 years ago. There's probably some big crazy guy up here just like me saying, "Don't go spend all that money on the parkway because you're just going to get three lanes, and it's really going to do nothing for you." So I envy having three lanes for the safety reasons, you know, a middle lane to cross into and wait and dodge traffic. I also have property in the thumb, and when I have to go south, I have to go, cut through Redmond, the town border, and have to make a left on Camden Road onto the parkway. And it's really dangerous because there's no middle lane to turn into. You basically wait for a car to flash their lights at you, and then you can make your turn. But that's at 1.7, so Sahali's at 1.1. So yeah, I think concurrency is a good thing because you got to do something, because you don't want it to end up like the parkway. But spending the money for a three-lane improvement, that's exactly what we did on the parkway 15 years ago. And by the time you're done, or by the time we decided to quit, it was already failing anyways. So I support this concurrency, but I think the solutions are not three lanes. I think it's going to be a hybrid approach, you know? For people like me who want to be able to cross the Holly Way, you know, have crossings, have turn lanes, but not just say, hey, blanket three full lanes, $50 million for two-and-a-half miles or whatever. Because that's kind of what we just did down on the parkway and didn't really work. And I feel like maybe that's right where we're going, and that's kind of how I don't know where this is all going to go, because I could imagine, you know, somebody saying this 15 years ago. So if we can concentrate on actual solutions, connectivity, new roads that connect the city, other, other solutions that move people and. city, other, other solutions that move people and add capacity without just one blanket fix. And I saw a few of those on the minutes tonight. I support all those. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that wants to address the council in this public hearing?
Hi, my name is Rene Bornfriend. Do you need my address?
We do.
21530 Northeast 29th Street. And I am the president of the Sahali Maintenance Association. So I agree, we don't want to pave over, as an example. We had the good fortune of having the mayor, the deputy mayor, and Councilman Valderrama come out to speak with us in March to our board and to our residents. And you provided a lot of different solutions, not just paving over. A lot of different solutions, and we're happy to see that. I know that is part of the Band-Aid, but it looks like you're looking to find other creative avenues, and we appreciate that. And we appreciate that it's a very complex topic. But, you know, we're sort of landlocked back. We don't have a major highway like Issaquah does and Redmond does with 520 and I-90. And not only are we concerned about the congestion of new development, but we're also concerned with having some of our backyards being paved over. So we appreciate what you're doing. The only thing that I ask is, when you came out and talked to us as a board and a community, you promised to communicate with us, and I think that might have, we might have dropped the ball. And my request is that you keep us in the loop above and beyond what we can read on the, you know, if it's something specific having to do with Sahali, we, you know, we appreciate some more communication. So we learned about this meeting tonight almost through serendipity.
So, Mr. Acting City Manager, if you could maybe just take note of additional publication as we go through this process, both for Sahali, but then not just for Sahali, the greater community as well. And I think we can use as many channels as we have. I know you may need to pass all that information to our incoming city manager, who starts here in another week, so that, that may have been where the hiccup happened.
I mean, it's a big deal, not only for Sahali, for other residents within Simamish, but it is specifically an issue for Sahali. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Okay, seeing none. I think our intent is to continue this public hearing to a date certain of May 21st. So, hmm? We're continuing, that was what was in here. So if there's a difference, if we want to have a discussion, I'm going to open it up to council right now, that we will continue the public hearing. Councilmember Hornish.
Yeah, just for everybody to understand, we were working through logistics to try to get everybody to vote. We have one member, who's usually me, on the phone here tonight on international travel. We did notice this on publicly for tonight. I think we're trying to grasp with the legal requirement of publication in Seattle Times. That's what's required legally, but it's kind of like, it doesn't work very well, if we acknowledge it. But it was legally required, or noticed for tonight. But we understand that some people weren't aware, so we want to give the ability for people to voice their concerns. Problem is, we have to vote before 6:01, and we can't extend it anymore because of a 30-day notice and everything, so it's just not on the option. But we do want all seven, and 5/21 does not get all seven of us here.
It doesn't.
Because of logistics, travel, personal concerns, and everything else. So I would move that we consider extending it to 6:14, and consider it, continue the public hearing to 6:14, I'm sorry, 5/14. A week from tonight, make sure we get a good notice out, not Seattle Times, and consider it next Tuesday with, we'd have to call a special meeting as well.
Okay, so to continue the hearing to 5:14 rather than extending.
Yes.
Okay. So there is a motion on the floor to move to a date certain for continuation of the hearing to May 14th.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so we'll now have discussion on the motion. Councilmember Hornish, did you want to speak to your motion?
I think I just did.
Okey-dokey. Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so the 5/21 date is significant because that is the date that was presented to the Sahali residents when the mayor, deputy mayor, and councilmember Valderrama, as well as the interim city manager, went and met with the residents. So I want us to find a date so that we can have everyone here. I don't want to exclude anyone either. But I think we need to find a date that allows us to extend this hearing to 5/21, because that's what we communicated to the residents. And I think that it's only fair that we don't cut the, the conversation off any time before that. So is there a date after 5/21 that we can make work? I see shaking heads. It doesn't have to be a Tuesday, right? I mean, nobody says our meetings have to be on a Tuesday. So we can extend the, the, the public hearing until 5/21 to allow any other residents who are planning to come at that time, and we can schedule a meeting after that when everyone can be present. Because I don't think the issue is simply that we communicated it in just the Seattle Times. I think the issue that was raised by the Sahali residents, and we have email to that effect, was that there was a presentation that said there would be a public hearing on 5/21 on this very subject.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Deputy Mayor Moran, you now have the floor.
We did get one email to that effect, and I got four emails that said it really didn't matter that way. But, that being said, does the 28th of May work?
No. Yeah.
No.
There will be a gap. There will be a gap.
Okay, explain that.
I'll let you, the city attorney, explain it.
Thank you. So, council, I don't presume to know how the seven of you vote on this ordinance. What I can tell you is that state law provides for a means by which an ordinance is effective immediately. But for it to be effective immediately, it takes at least five votes. If, if the ordinance passes with four votes, then it's not effective until five days after the ordinance is published, which is probably seven or eight days after you adopt it. So there could well be a gap then, between the expiration of the interim regs on June 1 and the effective date of the new regs.
Deputy Mayor Moran, you still have your light on. Okay. I don't have any additional lights on, but I can offer up, so 5/22, okay.
First thing?
Yeah, let me, let me finish my thought really quick here, Ramiro. So 5/22, 5/21 is the, is the next Tuesday, correct? I think, and the deputy mayor is unavailable, and I'll let you speak to your availability after that, but I think 5/22 would be the very last date. We'd be able to have a continuation of the public hearing and actually vote on it, because he just said seven or eight days. Eight days would be 5/30, the regulations expire 6/1. So we need to work backwards from that to, okay. Well, I'm trying to give us a little bit of a buffer so we don't have an expiration. So, but with the deputy mayor, I, at least from what I've heard, and I think from what we've all heard, she's not going to be available after that date. So we need to move backwards from the 21st. Unless you want to speak to your absence.
Yeah, for medical reasons, I'm not going to be able to be here after the 21st, 21st and after.
Okay.
I'm thinking that I could probably, you know, that Thursday or Friday. But I don't want to promise anything before that, and I wouldn't be able to be here.
By 5/22 is the striking line.
So Councilmember Valderrama.
Yes, I would support the motion or the comments made by Councilmember Stewart on the issue that we have from the Simamish homeowners that we were going to do on the 21st. We've received a number of letters from them, that they plan their travel and the representation of their issues based on that date. Frankly, I planned my travel based on that for this week, and next week I will also be going on travel for medical reasons. But we've heard repeatedly from some Sahali, that the 21st is the date when they plan to be ready, based upon what the council members have told on the city manager. And I believe we need to respect that they're traveling right now on the 21st. Thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Okay, so maybe, I'm sure we all heard it, but I think at least it bears acknowledging that the fact that we're only working with the, the four-to-three number, we could get to five-to-two on this. And I think it's important that maybe we look at our agenda, look at our schedules and what we have scheduled for next study session, next week, I believe, on the 14th, I believe.
Yes.
And we could maybe come to a consensus without voting, maybe some, God forbid, some compromise, and maybe get to five-to-two, so that at that meeting, on the 21st, or the 25th, or whenever councilmember, sorry, deputy mayor Moran is able, that we wouldn't be looking at that eight-day block staring us in the face. We could be looking at that, at a potential five-to-two situation, where it might take effect right away. I just want to put that out there, because I think we should at least acknowledge that we have an opportunity to not be wedded to this eight-day hold, and we have an opportunity to find compromise. And maybe we should look at that at our next study session as an opportunity, rather than what appears to be a, an almost an impassable situation here. I don't think any of us want the, all the past, the million dollars and all the work that's gone into the past year to be for nothing, or at least a potential opportunity for somebody else to sneak in, or whatever could happen in that, that interregnum between the passage, the publication, and the adoption in a four-to-three vote. So I would just implore us as a council to think about other options, recognizing the importance of having the folks from Sahali have their opportunity. This segment of road affects them the most directly. It's, in my mind, of utmost importance that we respect that May 21st date that was publicized. It is of the utmost importance as well, right next to that, that we have all seven councilmembers speaking to this, whether they're on the phone, recovering from medical procedures, or traveling overseas, whatever that is, at that date. We could have the meeting on the 26th, or 27th, or whenever deputy mayor Moran's available, or whenever councilmember Valderrama's available. But in the meantime, we have an opportunity to come together and get to more than a four-to-three vote. Now, I want to be in that five. I want to buy into this. I want to be part of that majority. So I would hope that we can at least talk about that, and maybe, you know, move on from our public hearing now, and spend the next week or two trying to figure out where those commonalities are, so that we can set that mandatory eight days in a four-to-three vote, and look in the rearview mirror at that, and find a consensus, five-to-two or maybe more. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
I would very much agree with Councilmember Ritchie. I would like to see us all agree on this. I would like to see that, you know, see us all go forward on this, and something that we could, even if we, it wasn't our favorite option, that we, you know, we could support it. That being said, I'd like to propose that, you know, we do work, have a date set that we work on it together, and hopefully come up with something. But have the backup date, and I'm going to propose a date that isn't my favorite date, but of May 23rd, does that work with everything we need? It's, it'll be Thursday, it would be that Thursday. And I'd have to call in. I will do that. But, because Sahali, yes, we had, there's, I got numerous emails just a couple weeks ago from folks in Sahali, because they had seen something that upset them, and, and they need to be heard. And, so I think that we, we need to be, we need to let Sahali be heard from the fact that they didn't get fair notice for today. They didn't, they're depending on the 21st. They have seen information go out that they, you know, were upset about a few weeks ago. They really need to have the 21st as their date. So I'm, I believe we should do that. I also believe we should, as a council, try to work together to come up with a solution.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that we have potentially 5/23 for a call-in. We have a motion on the floor, however, to move to a date certain for continuation of the hearing to the 14th, and it was seconded, so we do need to vote on that. We could, someone could propose an amendment. Yes, they could. So if we can have that done, and then we can all discuss whether or not that 23rd will work for our schedules, then I think we'll have a plan to move forward here. So, Councilmember Stewart.
So, let me check before I propose an amendment that I can't actually commit to. That would be silly. But I am looking to propose an amendment that we extend this to the 23rd. So I would like to amend the motion on the floor.
The amendment-
I think that was a second.
It was. The amendment of 5/23 has been moved and seconded now. So now we are discussing-
I'm sorry, one more thing. I'd like to thank deputy mayor Moran for your flexibility and willingness to call in on that date. Thank you.
So, okay, so the amendment of 5/23, if we can just kind of weigh in on that. Councilmember Hornish.
I'm looking at the dates. We're not, the city's not open on June 1st and 2nd. So effectively, if, it's five days after publication, right? So if you count back five from the 3rd, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, we'd have to publish it by the 29th. Can we do that, Melanie? If we, if we adopt it, if it is adopted on the 23rd with a 4-3, without a 5-2? Okay? I mean, it'd be nice if we could try to do it on the 28th even, just to give a little bit of leeway, but it's five calendar days. So, yeah. Okay, so we'd have Monday, Tuesday, we'd have Friday, Monday, Tuesday to basically do it, and even Wednesday as a backup. Okay?
That's timely.
Councilmember Ross.
I think you answered the question. So that 23rd would be timely if we were not to get to a supermajority.
Right. Sounds like it.
Just, it probably would be. The only issue is, all Melanie can do the next morning is get the ordinance to the Times and ask them to publish it as fast as possible. But if they sit on it, it could have an issue. Not likely, given their, their tradition, but just keep that in mind. Not likely.
But if you do it the next day, you got four days, so.
I think that would be a hiccup, because I think the last one we passed, 10 days, November 20th, to-
Oh, that one was there.
Okay. Okay. I figured Thanksgiving might have been a factor there, but, okay. Councilmember Ross, are you-
Yeah, I guess there's another consideration-
Let's, if we can avoid the sidebar conversation.
Yeah, another consideration is, this is an ordinance that's been decoupled from the comp plan. We did that intentionally for the flexibility to look at our policy at a later date, as more information, and as we go through the TMP and other ideas come forward. And so this is not the last swing of the bat. By a long shot, we have other opportunities, and we've afforded ourselves those opportunities in the future. So I, I want to, I think it's important, in my opinion, that we continue to exist a past policy and not revert back to what we had without this interim ordinance.
Councilmember Ross, if I can steer you back to the amendment that's on the floor.
The amendment, okay, thank you. The amendment on the floor, I'm, I feel a little concerned that it's tight. I don't know what the, I defer to Melanie on how many times we've hit and missed on that, but it's in the hands of the Seattle Times.
It's pretty rare. It's very rare that they miss the deadline.
Councilmember, can you just pull your light off real quick? Chris, your light. Thanks. Okay, Councilmember Stewart, or no, sorry, Ritchie.
Okay, thanks. More to what Councilmember Ross just said about timing, and what Councilmember Hornish said, it is close. It is important that we get these things publicized, or published properly, or noticed properly. But that's on us to not force that timing issue. So if we're ever going to have a fire under our rear ends to get to a compromise position that doesn't compel us to be subject to the publishing standards of the Seattle Times, this is it. So I think that's a really good opportunity for us to come together and start a direction where we can compromise, and find those five, maybe even more, votes, so that we're not subject to that notice provision. And I know I mentioned that before, but I think it's really important that we stick to this. I support the amendment, I support moving it to the 23rd, but I think that that should be a fallback position, and we should really strive to recognize that that is not a lock. That 23rd date is not a lock that we can't guarantee. We're putting our, our city's concurrency plan in the hands of others. I would rather we kept it in our hands, find that compromise, find that position that we can get to five on, and move forward. And I think- And I think that requires us sitting down next week in a study session and fighting for that middle ground, and then all these, all this talk and concern and perseverating on whether or not it's going to be published in time, and the first and second fall in a weekend, is all just unnecessary. We can really move forward. So I support the amendment, moving it to the 23rd, but that creates an incredible opportunity for us. Let's, let's grab that opportunity, not put our city's concurrency plans in the hands of others. Let's grasp the moment.
Okay, so in the spirit of getting there, I think we've heard from everybody that, on the amendment, can we, are we okay to vote? Okay. So all those in favor of the amendment, which is to continue the hearing to a date certain of 523, say aye.
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 Okay. Five votes of 7-0, the amendment passes. So now, the main motion is to move to continue the date certain as amended.
And I will withdraw that if I may.
Yep, there you go. Okay. So we will continue that public hearing then, to a date certain of May 23rd. I assume 6:30 is amenable as the standard time that we normally meet? I'm trying to look at Aaron. Yep, okay. Just so it's--
He's like, "I don't care, I will bump me."
Just so it's crystal clear to everybody. Okay, so now we have an opportunity to, Councilmember Ritchie's point of kind of working through some of that compromise if council wants to this evening. We have some consultants here that we are able to ask questions of, and I have a light on already, so Councilmember Hornish.
Before we get into that discussion, I would just like to make sure that we need to notice a special meeting. There is notice requirements, there are legal requirements. We need to notice a special meeting on the 23rd. What's that take? How much time?
24 hours, isn't it?
24 hours. Can we do that today in a public forum as a notice and say we're going to do it? Or it has to be published, or?
Yeah, you can do it as a public service, but there's a statutory requirement for Melanie to post and send it to any media that have requested notices.
And post it on the website, I think, too, right? All right, all right. So I just want to make sure we get the formality of setting that special meeting on the 23rd.
And maybe we can, we can send a slide deck--
Fair enough, yeah.
--with an update of the date.
Okay.
Or a link, we could embed, and I'm not sure which slide deck you're talking about, but any slide decks should be housed on the city's website, and then that link should be sent out. Okay. So now I'm going to open it up to council to ask questions of staff and consultants that are present, if anyone has any questions. Nobody has any questions.
Sure, I got a question.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
So, I don't know if you guys recall, but on October 22nd, I actually raised the issue of the capacity number as well. And Victor, you weren't here for the slide, but I believe it was the same slide that you showed us on that same date, which shows the curve and the derivative, if you will, right, where the, the capacity, you know, the maximum capacity is that point at which the volume and the speed both start to decrease. So, I guess, given that, that, I just want to make sure, I don't know if we can show Victor that slide, but I want to get concurrence from him, that that is in fact the same slide he showed us back on October 22nd as well, and that that is accurate. Thank you, Melanie. And also Josh as well, since you are our traffic modeler. You are officially our traffic modeler, just to make sure that if that information is being shared, that we can get, get some commentary on that as well. And I don't know if you all remember, but I did a bunch of calculations showing that the, because there was a, a comment made that said that the, the difference between the measured volume and the actual capacity could be accounted for the fact that as cars go slower, then you are closer together and you fit more cars on the road. And I did a bunch of calculations that showed that the proportion between the actual measured volumes and what we were using as the capacity number, that that couldn't be accounted for strictly by putting the cars closer together, that, that math just didn't work out. And I shared hard copies of that on the 22nd, so if you guys wouldn't mind commenting on this for us. Josh, you want to, I don't know who wants to go first, but--
Okay, can you hear me? Is it close enough? So, this is not my slide.
No, but the graph is the same.
The graph is the same. The difference, because I think the slide that I had, the number probably goes out closer to, I think, 1,700 or 1,800 vehicles an hour. It was a freeway-related figure. So the capacity of a freeway, a free-flowing, unencumbered lane, is different than the capacity of an urban street.
You just have to hold it really close.
Okay. All right. So, the, the urban street, that Highway Capacity Manual version of 951, it's a capacity limit that's designed to ensure that the roadway works along with the adjacent cross streets. So it's essentially, remember we had the 1,800 vehicles an hour, that's one car every two seconds just driving, nothing's in their way. The Capacity Manual establishes a range of about 900 vehicles an hour to assume that you've got a cross street every quarter mile that is going across that free flow, taking up half the time, basically. The reason you can count more cars on East Lakes Mammoth Parkway than 950 is--
This is actually Sahale, but--
Okay, and similar in Sahale, there are no major side streets--
Right.
--that are consuming that through capacity. So that's how you can count higher than 950. But, so the 950 is intended to be the capacity of a road where you anticipate major cross streets every quarter mile.
So, so what I hear you saying is that, while it clearly isn't the 1,800 of just car every two seconds, given that we have a measured capacity of 1,400, we know that we can, in fact, handle that, but 951 is also low because we don't, in that particular corridor, we don't have the conditions that the 951 estimates.
Right. Then, yeah, and the 951 gets you--
I'm sorry, yes, okay.
Yeah, so, and the 950 gets you a few other things. So for instance, even at 1,400, for instance, making a left turn out of a side street is almost impossible. If you've tried it with that type of volume, someone has to slow down and stop for you. So again, that 950 is intended for that full lane, not full lane, for that lane to still be able to have people get in and out of an unsignalized or uncontrolled side street. So, so again, I think we had that conversation, that the 1,200 to 1,300 that was counted is really not anyone's desired operating condition. I don't think anyone wants to try to get onto or off of that lane.
But--
But that's the difference in the number. It's the difference between a free-flowing freeway lane, no friction at all, and a city street that you anticipate cross friction, left turns onto and off of it.
So I think the 951 is more accurate for, you know, kind of 228 through the core of the city where we have a lot of those cross streets, but maybe, but, but does underestimate the capacity on that strip of Sahale where we don't have as many cross streets. And also, it doesn't really take into consideration that when we look at our AM and PM flows, we have a huge unidirectional flow, and in the packet, it's also included that shows that these estimates don't, don't really change. I mean, they change by maybe 10 cars, and they don't take into, into consideration that directional flow, which we have an extreme case of in our city, especially on streets like Sahale. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Hornish.
So, refresh my memory, what a 1.0 V/over-C is as far as operating efficiency?
So, let, let me jump in on that one. So, the HCM-VC ratio is something different than what the city has adopted. The city has kind of that, the modified VC ratio. So, the Highway Capacity Manual VC, that is trying to calculate the exact capacity of the roadway.
But, but not at the full speed limit?
It is the point in which the volumes cause the speed to drop to a point where you get maximum throughput, but it is not at the posted speed limit.
Maximum throughput, or acceptable throughput and pain?
Maximum throughput, which means for a free-flow freeway facility that is posted at 55 or 60 miles an hour, that maximum throughput is somewhere in the 45 mile an hour range. So it is slower than your posted, but that's where you get the maximum throughput on the facility. Some Mammoth has set up a volume-to-capacity ratio where the capacity is specific to Some Mammoth. The re, I think the difference there is that Some Mammoth allows segments to go up to a Some Mammoth VC, a modified HCM VC of 1.4. If you do the math, that equates to 1,331 vehicles on the segment, which is right in between those two counted. If you'd also do the math on the 1.1 for the corridor, if you look at the difference there, we're at 1,046. That gives you approximately 80% of that 1.4 capacity. I'm, I'm seeing confused eyes, so I'm losing you in the math here, but the, what we're really looking at is a segment, Some Mammoth's segment capacity at the 1.4 is 1,331 vehicles an hour, which falls right in between those two measured volumes. For a corridor as a whole, we don't want multiple segments to be right up there at the, at the borderline. That's why the 1.1 VC for corridors brings that down, that corridor throughput down to roughly 1,046, because we don't want that gridlock on the corridor.
Well, what I'm struggling with on this is, it assumes the same speed for the tangential diff, uh, max. Because, I mean, the 951, 1,256, 1,403 is all the same speed on this graph. Is that true? Or is it probably not true? I didn't think so. So the graph doesn't really show what the max capacity is at that one speed. So, because the speed is on the y-axis, and it's all the same, and that just doesn't make sense to me, so I wanted to confirm. All right.
That is correct.
So that's why I thought that the, the speed changes depending on the volume and the congestion, and this graph has nothing to do, doesn't show any of that whatsoever. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
Trying to see if I can garner any logic from this. On the second bullet, capacity cannot be less than measured volumes.
Right.
That, however, I, that's a true statement, but the level of service can be F-minus if the measured volumes are greater than capacity. We have a capacity that aligns to a level of service. Am I correct? Or what am I missing on this?
So, level of service is our intersection metric--
Yes.
--and it's based on delay at intersections.
But 1.1 assumes a certain degradation in speed.
The, the VC calculations are not really looking at delay, and so it's not, it's not a direct correlation between VC and level of service.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart, you have your light on again, but are you okay if I get a couple questions in?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, wonderful. So Victor, I remember you being here, and you were standing up here when you talked about what the capacity is, as, through the Highway Capacity Manual. And I think this is looking at it at a very different, through a different lens, which is literal capacity. And what my understanding was from your explanation was that it's, it's more a capacity of measure of how much pain you're in while you're driving. And that 1.0 was kind of that acceptable level of frustration for driving, and so as you go above that, you're probably driving slower. As I noticed today, going over the tube count down Sahale, the cars were crawling over it, going very slowly. So throughput was minimized, actually, in that scenario, because they couldn't get over the counter strip fast enough. But can you kind of walk us through that?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a very con, there's a lot of, I think, terms and measures we're kind of merging together here. But the, if you remember when I was standing at the podium and you asked for my opinion on a sort of a maximum V/over-C ratio, where I came up with 1.4, as Josh just pointed out, is it's right between those two numbers. And the analogy was, that's what it, you know, that's what it feels like to me going northbound on East Lakes Mammoth Parkway in the morning, and what it feels like to a lot of other people going northbound on Sahale Way in the morning. It is that pain level. That's what we've kind of counted as a pain level. You don't necessarily want your capacity at the unbearable pain level, because that, if you pick that, if you pick 1.4 for the whole corridor, then from Northeast Eighth to Sahale Way will feel just like the last half-mile, instead of, at least you moved for part of it. So that's where, that 950 to 1,000, that's sort of the bearable, okay, the road is busy, but, you know, I'm making it generally through the intersections, maybe I'm waiting two signals, but I'm not waiting four, watching it turn green and red, and I'm not moving. So, so that's, again, we're, we're trying to work with some numbers that, in the Highway Capacity Manual, mean slightly different things. So, so 950 would feel comfortable. If you, if you had a 950 capacity, you would not be stressed, you know, your driver experience, you guys have used that term, would be fairly high, you'd feel pretty okay. And your driver experience coming on from a side street, you would go, okay, I, I had to wait, but I was able to make my left turn without having to force someone to stop or risk my life. When you get to 1,400, if you try to make a left turn across 1,400 vehicles an hour, again, someone has to stop for you, or you have to take a risk. So that's why, that's really not an operational capacity. It's the number of cars that, that can use the lane, but it's not a number we want to pick as the maximum, because it makes it miserable for everybody using the roadway, and unsafe, for that matter.
Yeah, and I, you know, I found this slide, and the number is actually fairly informative, because we don't even have 2017 traffic counts, we're still dealing with three-year-old data when we're looking at our VC ratios over here. So by providing the May 2017, and I noticed it's a singular date, so I'm going to guess it was the high point that was picked there during that week, because the other one, the 2016 count of 1,256 is an average. But even if this is in the ballpark of an average number, the 1,403, it allows you to do the math on what the V/over-C is, which is 1.47 there. And if you take that and you use the numbers given in 2016 and 2017, and I'm just doing this for a walkthrough in numbers, it's almost a 12% increase in a singular year of volume of cars going on our road. So if you start going further out with the years, in 2018, you get a 1.62. In 2019, that could be 1.78.
It's, you may or may not see that growth rate.
True, true. I, I mean, I, I only had 2017. I'd like to see 2017, I'd like to see 2018, right? I mean, I think dealing with the most relevant data we have is helpful to understand current situation. I understand under level of service at intersections, we were operating under our comp plan, and we were, we had to use 2016 numbers, but we're dealing with interim development regulations, so we're not married to 2016 counts. I understand you have to rerun the model, but I'm just trying to get a glimpse. This was, I appreciated being able to have the glimpse as to what, what does it really look like out there right now? Because it doesn't, it's, you know, it's, it's not a 1.1 or whatever it is currently. And this segment, incidentally, of 951 is from 37th Way, well, it's, it's got the map right there, to the jurisdictional border. Just before that, the V/over-C drops to 906, I believe, and that continues all the way down to Northeast Eighth for the capacity. So, and then, as for comparison, on 228th, Councilmember Stewart, you brought that up, the capacity there is 1,861. So, much different, because we have those two lanes and the median there as well. Okay, Councilmember Ritchie.
So we have in front of us some potential solutions to this concurrency issue. Whatever number we pick, I hear you, there's some real rationale to 951, I get that. I think there's real rationale to finding a middle ground, too, you know, between 951 and 1,256, too, to try to figure out what the right answer is. But that's not on our, our menu today, so, just working off our menu for today. There are three things that appear to have passes. Are you looking the same thing I am, or page, uh, 4 of the packet? Give you a sec to pull that up.
Of the packet?
Oh, sorry, of the, of this section of the packet. Yeah, there we go. So, my question to the, our traffic engineers and traffic modeler, of these things that are proposed as solutions, number one, gets us an installation of a traffic signal at Sahale Way North-- Sahali Way, Northeast, Northeast and Northeast 28th Street. That gets us a pass in terms of our concurrency modeling. Number five, widening Northeast Sahali Way to three lanes with the median, right turn pockets from 12th to the city limits. And then apparently there's a combination of that one as well as number three, which number three in and of itself would not pass, but a combination of three and five, number three being connecting 22nd Street and 244th Northeast to 236 to have Northeast. So, my question is, of those things, I mean, we're talking about two different things here, right? We're talking about setting a number, right, this 951, or this 1256, or this 14-- let's talk about driver experience for a sec. Let's talk about what it's like to go down the hill every morning, and, you know, I have family that do that every day. So, my question is, of these possible solutions, which of the, of that pass, of those three possible solutions, or I guess would be, yeah, of those three possible solutions, one, five, and seven, which would be the safest option for drivers and residents living along that stretch of road? And if they all pass, we're out of this blockage we're in, so be it. But in terms of safety, which to me is something we haven't spent enough time talking about, but I appreciate, you know, Victor, that you've talked about that a little bit here tonight, more so than we have in the past, so I'm grateful for that. So, can you speak to the safety component of those three options? And which would, money aside, all that aside, which is the safest?
Sure. And actually, one question for Josh, your modeler, is these volumes are the 2016 count?
Yep.
Or the pipeline? Okay, so, one thing to keep in perspective as you're thinking about those numbers is, this is pipeline, so it's projects that were, have capacity reservation certificates prior to your moratorium. And so, all of these options, you're going to barely pass. And if a big project comes in and tries to do a concurrency test, it's likely going to fail again. So just I want you to be aware that having it barely pass right now without figuring out the next level of growth that comes on top will help you for, until the next application comes in. So I wanted to start with that. Is, none of those numbers are saying, well, we increased the capacity 20%. We've got, you know, at 1.07, you know, you've got a 3% reserve capacity, so you're not going to add much growth with only a 3% of 950. You know, do the math, that's a small number, that's not many new trips.
I'm not a math guy. Can you tell me that real quick? Do you know that? I mean, if we're looking at, I just want to make, what are we talking about? Well, if, say, we do the, probably the, probably the lowest cost of the three, just add cost as a component. I know we're talking safety, but I want to get back to that. But we're talking cost. What is the, how much more are we getting bang for our buck, so to speak, in terms of what kind of development is going to come in and add how many cars? I mean, how many vehicle, how many vehicle trips per day are we getting for that?
Josh, check my math. So 3%, more, if we want to keep under a 1.1, we have a 1.07, so 3% of 1,000 is 30. So 30 single-family units, and you'll be over the top again.
Single-family unit equating to--
30 single-family units where every single one of the vehicles drives on that link, on that segment.
Which won't be the case.
Which--
It's not much, is the point.
But half and half, then it could be six.
So 60.
Okay. So, so the, little clarification. The first one up there, number one, does not add capacity to Sahali. It allows that intersection to pass. Five and seven are the one, five adds capacity to Sahali, seven adds capacity else, or, three adds capacity elsewhere to your system that would then pull traffic off of Sahali. So it's, that improvement wouldn't add physical capacity on Sahali. It's getting traffic off. And it doesn't, it pulls some, but as Victor was saying, in the neighborhood of 30 to 40 vehicles off of Sahali.
So which is the safest?
The safest improvement is five.
Okay.
You get additional turn lanes, you get that conflict out of your through lanes, you add right turn pockets, potentially sidewalks, bike lanes, that type of thing that separates and allows that multimodal use in a safer manner.
Thank you.
I'm losing track of who has already spoke. Deputy Mayor, have you already, have you talked?
Um, not on the--
Okay, then you're up.
Victor, I want to go back to the safety on the Sahali. First of all, that, that road has been promised safety measures since before incorporation. It had money promised to it and then taken from it, and ever since then. So, what can we do to Sahali? Three-lane section, one of the things I like about the three-lane section is it allows for transportation on the one side to continue, so you don't have, you know, you're not stopping for a bus. I like that, because stopping for buses when they're going the other way, that's, I like that. But I also want to make sure that we're not going into private property when we don't have to be. So, do we have our road standards enough, do we have flexible enough road standards in that public works? Do we have flexible road standards that perhaps may keep us from having to do that if we were to put in a center, center lane, or center pockets, or center median, or whatever?
If we did a three-lane roadway section on Sahali, we would have to basically cause deviation, because the standards say that that road should be five lanes. But there, we can, we can go through that process and build three lanes.
Councilmember Ralder, I don't think you've spoken. Did you want to jump in, or no?
No, I'm listening.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart.
So I want to go back just a minute for the capacity number one more time. So Victor, you said at 951, that's stress-free. And I just want to emphasize for people that we are talking about the peak hour. So we're talking about the peak of rush hour. We're not talking about all the time, we're talking about the peak of rush hour. And I just want people to think about that for a moment, because I don't know that we need to be building our roads to be completely stress-free during the peak rush hour. And so I think that's a really important point for us to consider, in addition to the fact that we aren't considering that the failures actually start outside the city, right? The source of these failures is not necessarily that our roadway doesn't have enough capacity, it's that we get backed up on 202, which starts to back up the light, right? The light on 202, people get stuck there because of the, of conditions outside of the city. And we're not looking at, I don't believe that these 2024 numbers are going to take into consideration the fact that there's going to be light rail in Redmond, and how we're going to need to be setting up transit to deal with the light rail and those situations. So I feel like there are a lot of factors not considered here. Doesn't mean that we don't need to, you know, look at, at conditions, but I think it's really important for the community to say, how much do we want to be building out and spending on things that, one, how much do we have to build for the peak of rush hour? Is it okay if it's a little bit congested and, and a little bit stressful during the peak of rush hour? In my mind, yes. Victor, you, you're the one who've taught, who've talked at length about spread, right? Part of what you want is when things get a little bit crowded at a particular time, people will adjust their schedules, and you'll see things start to spread out. The other thing, too, is that we want to encourage people to take transit. So it's an opportunity for us to figure out how we optimize transit, and we get the cars off the road, and we get people into transit. So I think there are a lot of factors here, and I think we need to consider what we want to be building out for, and what we want to be spending taxpayer dollars on for our peak of rush hour. Because again, this is potentially a 15-minute increment that we measure generally four days a week, only when school is in session. Because if you look at the, the road conditions in the summers, if you look on holidays, if you look on weekends, and if you look on Fridays, the road conditions are very different. So this is generally Monday through Thursday during school. And that's it. And it's not to minimize the commute. I've been commuting from here to Microsoft for over 16 years, I get it. But I just think it's really important for us to consider that, as we consider what we set these standards to, and then how much we have to improve these roads to reduce people's time on one corridor, right? Which is how long? Half a mile? Quarter a mile?
This corridor, this, this segment or the corridor?
This corridor that fails.
It's longer than--
It's longer than that.
It's a couple miles, I think.
Or the segment that, or the segment that causes the failure, right? I mean, we're, again, I don't want to minimize the fact that there's traffic to sit in, but it is a very small section of road for a very brief period of time, for a very finite number of days, that we need to be considering. And so I think it is our job to balance all of this, and to make sure that when we look at this, we're looking at it from a very pragmatic position. And that, do we really want to set it? Is, is the goal here that rush hour moves as smoothly as any other hour of the day? That it's stress-free? Because I don't think the goal of rush hour is stress-free, but that's just my take.
Councilmember Hornish.
Yes, thank you. Josh, I read the HCM a couple years ago, it's been a long time, but I was just looking at my notes, and we might want to take this offline, but I think you, did you say in response to Councilmember Ross is that a V over C is not a level of service? Because I think the HCM talks about a level of service primarily as an EF, it's basically binary.
Level of service EF is based on the driver delay and not volume to capacity. Volume to capacity is a separate metric.
But they talk about different volume to capacity level of services.
The--
Let's take it offline, we can go to the HCM, basically. And just another thing about the HCM to kind of address the point that Councilmember Stewart is making. The HCM is 100 ex, 100 experts got together and put that together, is that right? 100 engineers, basically?
No.
How many?
I don't think 100, but it's, it was reviewed by probably 1,000.
Okay, okay. And, and if you read it, they, they do talk about trying to balance, that you don't want to make it to where everybody's going to speed limit during peak hour, because that's way too big. So there's, there's an inherently balancing from the scientific engineer's point of view in the HCM. It's our job, to her point, for, for the, the level of service and a, as a policy, just to be clear. But, but the, but the engineers, the scientists say, this is kind of what we think is reasonable balance. Is that fair?
The scientists and the engineers give us metrics to measure traffic flow. It's up to cities, counties, agencies to determine what levels are adequate for their different jurisdictions.
But they kind of say 1.0 is, eh, kind of what they think.
They say 1.0 is capacity, and that's, that's where they leave it.
Okay.
There are, they say this is free flow, this is not. They don't, in the HCM, say, the city should adopt VC of .9, or .7, or a level of service of B, C, D, or E. They, they give us ways to measure.
But I think it does say at 1.0 is an E and F, E or F, basically, so--
Right. An E or F for a policy decision, as well as--
Fair point, I agree. But that's kind of what, from the scientific point of view, they're saying a 1.0 is an EF poor level of service. So, now, we can accept that, we can, to be fair. All right. Is there, and final question from me then, is, is there anything else that we could do on Sahali besides the three-lane to think about helping out the flow even above and beyond just the capacity, per se?
On Sahali, I would say not necessarily. The, the downstream constraint is really the issue. It's, if, traffic flows like water, and so if you picture a funnel--
If only, sorry.
If, if you picture a funnel, you've got your, the tightest spot of the funnel is that downstream constraint. Either the intersection of 202 at Sahali, or downstream in Redmond on 202, and that, that pinch point in the funnel backs traffic up onto Sahali. If we improve Sahali, you're really building the top of your funnel. You can hold more cars, it'll drop the level if you widen the funnel, so that back of Q will get a little bit shorter, but you're really just adding more storage space for vehicles. You have to open that pinch point to allow the, a larger flow of traffic out of Sahali, off of Sahali, down 202, through Redmond. So that's really the, the biggest constraint here.
It's a limb fact, okay. I like that analogy, that's actually good. Did you have anything to add, Victor?
Yeah, so, again, a little less Highway Capacity Manual, a little more driver experience, which is really very fuzzy out there, is, in general, if, if you're driving in that congested situation, most drivers are more comfortable having a better experience if they're actually on a finished road. So if you imagine yourself on a narrow road with no shoulders, and it's extremely congested, that is a different driver experience than I'm on a completed urban street. A bicyclist can actually zoom by me on a shoulder or bike lane, call it whatever you want. A bus can pull out, out of my way. So, I don't know, 15 years ago, I had a similar situation with the city of Mount Vernon, a road that was on the, kind of not quite meeting their three-lane standard, but they didn't, they didn't want to spend the money on five lanes, which is what it boils down to. So we did what we called a super three-lane road. So we built the best three-lane road we could, so it had slightly wider travel lanes, it had slightly wider bike lanes. That allows you to have stalled vehicles, and it's still pretty easy to get by the stalled vehicles. You could do landscape medians that are eight feet wide instead of 12, so you have a two-foot shoulder on the left, so now you have essentially a 20-foot road that, you know, if there even wasn't an emergency where you had to evacuate the city, you could have two through lanes going out on a three-lane road. And then you need to look at, again, street standards, you got to want to be careful about adding too much on the outside. If you do that kind of road, you may want to, you know, potentially eliminate the landscape strip between the bike lane and the sidewalk, because now you have a bike lane buffering you from vehicles, so you can save some space there. But the, I think the thing you have here is that you're trying to figure out what, what road do you want to end up with? Because really, your level of service standard is to guide you towards that decision. What road do we want when we're done, whether it's Sahali, or 228, or 244th, or any other road? What, your standard is to help you get there. And so you want a standard that essentially identifies a problem, so that you have to solve the problem. If you, if you raise your V over C ratio so high that there's never an identified problem, then you can't ask anyone to ever mitigate it. So that's that balancing act. You want to think of the V, this V over C ratio as the threshold at which you do something, and then what you do is design a really good road, kind of within your budget constraint. And so, you know, if it were me, I'd want to see that sort of future forecast so that, because the V over C you want to pick is how, how is that three-lane road, if that's kind of what you can afford, how's it going to work in 2035 when town center's developed? And if, to me, if that were a 1.4, then I might pick, you know, a 1.4 even for the corridor, or pick a number, you know, if you, if you just pick 1,300 as the capacity, that doesn't sound as, doesn't sound like a failure compared to a V over C of 1.4. You'd say, our standard is a number. And even the Highway Capacity Manual in a future version, they're going to get rid of the, they've already talked about getting rid of the A through F, because, because no one can afford A, or B, or C, and it's sort of wasteful. So they're going to probably just go to numbers. So that's something to consider, is that your level of service standard, it's a qual, it is, Highway Capacity Manual in some areas calls it quality of service instead of level. It is what is the quality of my use of this road, and generally, that's a finished road. Actually, all those calculations they do typically are assuming you've built a road to urban standards when they're doing an urban level of service calculation.
Actually, one more question, I lied. So, for Cheryl, if we were to do and adopt number five that's on the screen, and put that on the tip, then the concurrent, we would no longer have a failure, is what you're saying, for the next six years? Okay, just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
Well, I just wanted to get--
So, let me answer that one really quick. The current applications into the city would not cause that segment, or that corridor to fail. It's possible that you could have enough development come in that would cause traffic volumes to increase enough on that corridor to still have a failure even if we built five.
Number five.
Number five, yeah. Yes.
Thanks for that clarification. All right, Deputy Mayor Moran.
I just wanted to address the Sahali road, and that Sahali is, it's, it's not, to address Sahali, it's, to me, it's about safety, and it's about bringing a rural road to city standards. And it's one of our most traveled roads, and it has been on the TIP for over 20 years. And just because we don't currently have a council member that happens to live in that area, that is here screaming about it, doesn't mean that we can push traffic up there and not go up there, and put in the sidewalks, and put in the, the safety things, and turn it into the road that it's supposed to be. I think we owe it to the citizens up there to put-- there to put that road in and do a good job of it.
That is certainly up to the council's prerogative. And if that's the direction, we'd be more than happy to develop a scope and estimate and put it on the tip.
So as it pertains to Sahali, I do want to point out the fact that the numbers that we're dealing with were concrete, 7 to 8 a.m. That is not the peak on Sahali. I just want to make sure we're clear on that because the numbers are given in 15-minute increments. The peak is after that. So it's actually a little bit worse when you're in that peak commute time. I think the one thing that troubles me is, was kind of highlighted earlier, we've got the 2024 pipeline numbers here and what happens if we do these, but we don't know what happens further down the road. And understanding the more longer-term implications of, you know, additions to our tip that we do, what does that look like in 2035? I mean, I think if we're going to be executing multimillion-dollar projects up here, understanding the longer-term implications of those projects, I mean, maybe number five is the way to go. But will that dovetail into a future project that we have to do? Or maybe the project is down there at 202 in Sahali, which is a nice dovetail into the fact that I think we have to study that. We love to say that that's our problem, but we have no concrete evidence that that is our problem. And if we were to model that intersection with some other treatment other than a light, whether that's a flyover, and I know we're talking really expensive projects here, but we need data. If we understand a roundabout fixes our issues there, that gives us the ability to go back to WASDOT and the legislature and say, hey, we have a project here. And not only are we a beneficiary of it, but, you know, the county and the state is too, and gives us the opportunity to ask for additional funds down there. And if that truly solves our problem, then we should be looking at it. I think a lot of the council has sat up here and said 202 and Sahali is the problem. So I think it would behoove us to model that intersection with something other than what's currently there, to understand what the solution might be for the longer term. Because then maybe number five changes our minds as far as V over C, because I think many of us are more interested in that throughput rather than, and that driver experience than we talked about, than what the numbers are, right? So... There is the 2-2 study, but it's not going to look at modeling that intersection and what happens further upstream in Sammamish. So... I think Victor's got something. Hold on, hold on, two seconds. Go ahead, Victor.
Yeah. So a couple of years ago, we took a brief look at Sahali. And so one of the challenges we had was that the current tools don't do actually a good job. They were, you know, spouting out LOSD, and you guys were telling me I was crazy because it doesn't, it works a lot worse than that. So there are some, with the current operation, what, one of the things that we observed, we kind of went out there to figure out why is the computer model saying something other than real life, is the double left turn lane that's there, that second left turn lane to your left as you're coming down the hill. Once it turns green, that lane is starved because you've got one lane coming down the hill that splits to your right only, a through, left, and a left. And so the fact that it's not completely full of cars, so they all go when that arrow comes on, makes it less efficient than it looks like on paper. It's called a turnpocket starvation. You just can't get the cars in the pocket. So, and I think you guys have talked about restriping that. I mean, if that pocket were 300 feet, 500 feet longer, you'd notice a pretty significant difference. We did look at, you know, additional capacity enhancements. And then you do get into the situation of, okay, what's the next downstream bottleneck? And there are going to be, there are some now. There will be some bigger ones in the future. Sound transits, park and ride, located, just, I guess it's north, north of the Whole Foods on 202 is going to introduce a new, you're aware of the intersection by the Chevron car wash? Their plans have a double left turn lane there accessing their parking garage, and their future forecast level of service, that intersection's worse than East Lake-Sammamish Parkway in 202. That's how much traffic is going in and out of that park and ride. So there are some other things happening. Not to say you shouldn't do something. Another level of service issue that, you know, WASDOT typically does now is they're not trying to solve every problem completely, to get to Pam's point, Ms. Stewart's point about you can't have perfection all the time. But they're beginning to look at how long is it bad? So I mean, you might not be able to solve the problem completely by improving Sahali Way, but you could make the problem duration shorter. So at least, you know, it's only bad for an hour instead of three hours. Because what's going to happen as you have more growth with limited capacity is you can't get that 1,600% increase. You know, eventually at 1,800 vehicles an hour, it flattens out, and you just have a problem longer. That's what tends to happen. So if you make enough improvements, you could essentially, what WASDOT tries to do now is how can we shorten that period of pain? They've given up on eliminating the pain, but how can we make it a little shorter?
The restriping is, I'm glad you brought that up. And I know staff has been working with King County to attempt to get that to happen. And I know that we put it out for bid, and we, everybody's really busy these days. Is that coming sometime soon, maybe?
Been promised. We've been promised. The county is actually going to resurface that, their stretch and then restripe.
Okay.
So that's why we decided, well, we didn't want to restripe and then them come in and repave. So they have been telling us they're going to do it this summer.
Okay.
When it gets closer to the date, hopefully they will, they'll let us know. But we'll stay in contact with them. Regarding the SR202 study, so we haven't had a staff briefing yet. I think it's scheduled in the next week or so. And then I think, I think it's early June, they'll be coming back to give, to give the council an update. And it is from 244th all the way into Redmond. It was only $200,000, as you know how much the work that we've all been through the last two years. Not sure that it'll result in much detail, but we'll find out in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
And then regarding studying that intersection, additional study, as Victor said, they did take a look at it a couple of years ago. If that's the will of the council, you know, the four, at least four council members, if you want us to put that on the tip, we will put that on the tip as well.
Put it on the tip as far as studying it, to model it?
Right. To allocate funds to it.
Okay. That would, I would love to see that on the tip.
Again, it's all, everything that's on the tip is at the council's desire.
I think we have some head nods. You might want to have that, have a placeholder on the tip for that one. Okay. Councilmember Ritchie?
No, didn't Ramiro want to speak?
Oh, yeah, he did.
He did. I think you guys had your lights on, but, okay. Councilmember Valderrama?
Yes. No, actually, Cheryl took my thunder, reminding us that we do, two years ago, the Legislative Committee of Jaren, Keller, and myself had secured that money for that study, and they will be coming back to us in the next couple of weeks with their analysis of what can be done as an initial for 202 and its effect on Sammamish. Cheryl took my thunder first.
Good job, Cheryl.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thanks. Three quick questions, then I'll be done, I hope. The restriping repaving thing, I don't know. My experience is that, you know, if there's throughput at the bottom of the hill, we can do a study. I think it's, we can study it, and we can come up with the answers that the driver experience is already living. I mean, I've seen it. And if there is throughput down the bottom of the hill, is it fair to say that we don't have concurrency failures along Sahali Way, specifically in the stretch that's a failure, if there is better throughput at the bottom of the hill, potentially through restriping?
No.
I'm asking them.
So that one's kind of a catch-22. If we, through restriping, we create additional capacity at the bottom of the hill that moves more vehicles through Sahali, without doing a capacity improvement, we would expect our VC results to actually go up. So we're moving more cars, but we're not changing the denominator, that capacity number, so those resulting values would increase.
Well, I got issues with the denominator. Don't get me wrong. But my concern is, I mean, my thought goes to the folks that live along the road, live along Sahali Way, you know, and they're basically trying to get out of their neighborhoods. And if we've got the queue backed up from 202 up the hill because of that turnpocket starvation, which is, sounds like the name of a band. I don't know. Anyway, it's, I guess my, my question is, if that turnpocket is no longer starved, if we've extended the turnpocket up the hill, if we have released the pressure along the residential section of Sahali Way, denominator, I get that that's still a challenge. But we are creating easier access for people to get out? Is that, is that true or no?
Out of the city.
No, out of their neighborhoods.
No. Because as you increase the conflicting volume, if you're at an unsignalized intersection, getting out of your neighborhood is harder with faster, more cars. So actually, it's easier when you have a fully congested corridor. It's more likely someone's going to stop and give you a gap and let you in. If they're going 30 miles an hour and three cars apart, they're not stopping anymore.
So...
So actually, that's why that number's there. So it is trying to balance, can I get out of my side street and can I get down the road? It's not just the get down the road number. It's how do I, how do I cross the street to get to the bus stop on the other side if I'm a pedestrian and I don't have a signal?
Right.
So that's what that number's trying to do.
I appreciate that. Let me add my two quickies here. More to the mayor's point about that this is or isn't the peak. Is this, this graph here, the thing we're looking at here, I mean, I think anybody can go to that road and pick it for time of day to decide what's peak. I don't know that that, I think we picked this is, this is the peak. The peak AM, peak hour northbound is what we're looking at. So is that not representative of the highest time of traffic? Or should we?
Set that because of the schools.
Right.
We, the council, voted on that, that 7 to 8.
I agree.
So one of the things to keep in mind, the pinch point of the funnel isn't changing. So if the queue has passed a certain spot on the roadway, then that pinch point isn't changing between the peak school hour or the peak volume hour citywide. So your throughput is theoretically static through those two hours.
Okay.
As long as that queue is backed up past whatever cross street you're trying to get out, the volume passing that cross street should be relatively constant throughout the peak when that queue is there.
Thank you. That's what I was trying to figure out. I appreciate that. One last question for Cheryl. If we are starting to talk seriously about option number five, the three-lane, the expansion to three-lane sidewalks and making it a real road or whatever that looks like, does that, and I don't know if this is something you can answer right now, but what, if any, private property taking does that entail? Or do you know, or, because I know we've been talking about this for a while. I know that three lanes was up for a while. Were there any private property takings along Sahali Way that were as a result of the three-lane project?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I should look at Andrew. Is it yes or no? I don't believe so.
And we don't take anything. We buy it. Just to be clear.
If they want to sell it?
Yes.
Yeah, then we take it if they don't sell it, right?
Hello, Andrew Zager's here. When we looked at it several years ago and we laid it out for the three-lane option, when we tried to minimize, there were a couple areas where we needed little strip takings, a little portions of property, but no full property takings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew, were those small enough areas that we could do deviation to standards or something on them?
Yeah. Everything's on the table. We try to minimize that.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. So a couple of things. One, just quick math. At 60 miles an hour, you go a mile a minute, right? At 15 miles an hour, you go a mile every four minutes, right? So I just want to point out that, again, if we want to think about driver experience, if we reduce the speed limit from 30 to 15, right, miles an hour, we're only talking, going from two minutes on our, on our mile stretch to four minutes, right? So from a driver experience and a driver delay, again, I'm not trying to minimize the fact that we got a lot of traffic here. I just want us to, again, keep all that in mind. But all of this conversation, you know what, you know what this tells me? We need to do our TMP. Because this isn't a singular issue, right? This isn't about, I feel like we're kind of doing the balloon animal thing, right? We're like, okay, well, let's fix it over here. Now it blows up over here, and then we're going to squeeze it over here. Now it blows up in the middle. We need a complete transportation system, and we need to complete the TMP. And we need to make sure that the TMP looks outside of the boundaries of our city to make sure that we understand how the pinch points are being addressed. And if they're not, then we, as I've heard it from staff, we as the council need to go do our jobs, which is go work with our regional partners to figure out how we're going to really improve the flow on 202. So if, you know, as Redmond is building out the light rail, and they're going to put in their park and ride, and that's going to create traffic problems, how are we working across the region with the transit partners and developing the full-on solutions and having the TMP look at, well, when there's light rail in Redmond, how are we moving our residents to that light rail and getting those cars off the road? So what I hear is, we need to figure out what we're going to do in the short term, and we need to figure out how we're going to get this TMP done and toot sweet, because this is really a much bigger problem than a singular thing. Now, I agree with Deputy Mayor Moran that we need to address, we need to figure out what we want to do with Sahali. There are safety issues there. Getting people out of those side streets may mean more roundabouts or more stoplights to help with that. And I think we need to address that as well. But again, that all says to me is, this is something where we need to look at a complete solution. We shouldn't be putting Band-Aids on. We shouldn't be, you know, applying these Band-Aids to someone who's bleeding. We need to look at a holistic solution for our entire transit system and we, or transportation system. And we need to look at it through the lens of having light rail in Redmond. Because that, that's happening, whether it's, you know, early, late 2024, early 2025, it's coming. And it will be life-altering. And I know people have a lot of different feelings around light rail and sound transit. I lived in an area where there was no rail system, and then they put a rail system in. It is life-altering. It will, it will change things. A lot of it for the better. A lot of people who have to commute into Bellevue and to Seattle, it will be a very positive thing for them if we can do a good job of getting people to the light rail. It will relieve a lot of congestion in a lot of areas if we do, if we provide people with options of not having to drive there. If the only way people get from Sammamish to the light rail is in their single occupancy vehicle, we haven't solved anything, and we're not really taking advantage of this. So I think we really need to get to the TMP. I think we need to look at, what do we want to do in the short term? And then how are we going to get the TMP done and really look at this over the longer term? That's what I hear all these discussions being about. And that doesn't mean we ignore the issues that people have on Sahali. But I think that if we're going to go improve this roadway, we need to do it with the long-term view and not put some Band-Aid on it and spend $50 million and slow people down for two years of road construction, only to have to turn around five or 10 years from now and do it again. That would be, that would be a travesty.
Okay. I don't have any more lights on. So does council have any more questions of this, or shall we move on? Actually, we should probably take a break.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I can make a request. So Josh is not available actually on the 24th. So if you have additional questions, if you could please, please, or the 23rd...
Email them.
Sorry, the 23rd. Please email them, you know, at least a week in advance. I'm not, actually, are you on vacation? Oh, okay. He's on vacation. He says he'll, you know, check emails, but please, if you could get them in a week before the 23rd, so we can, we'll have enough time to bring answers. Either email them in advance of the next meeting.
Would Victor be available too, on the 23rd? Do you know? Okay.
Right. But I, but I do want to, so there are some things that really Josh is in the best position to answer as the modeler. So if we can, if we can do that, so...
I think we can certainly get questions to you while in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's take a quick break. Thank you all for coming in and presenting and answering our questions. Okay. So our next item here is, got to turn the page? This is an ordinance relating to development regulations regarding the design and construction of short plats and subdivisions and amending and repealing certain sections. Ooh, I'm not going to read all of that, of the Sammamish municipal code. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Community Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Jeff Thomas. And to my right is David Pyle. So just to make sure we're on the same page, to orient you with the contents of your packet for this item this evening. In addition to the agenda bill with some options for you at the end of that for action, there's two exhibits. Exhibit one is the ordinance with the actual strike-throughs of the changes to the development code. And then exhibit two is simply an updated version of the code amendment summary matrix for your convenience while you were reviewing this in advance of tonight, to be able to see the final list of changes that were made, subject to City Council direction back on April 9th, when we last took this matter up. So with that, we also have two minor amendments that we would like to run through with you this evening before we turn it over to the council for your final discussion. Can you, Melanie? Melanie's going to bring them up on the screen here. Okay. So item two that was in your... Okay, so item two, that was in your exhibit two, was related to the term masquerading. And we, we did some really good work on that actually on April 9th. The council gave us some direction on. Since April 9th, we did have an additional tweak to this section. I think it's in green up there on your screen. And it just smoothes out the language a little bit more that we hope will be understandable to everybody and will be able to be applied in a good general sense as well. So that's that. We'll give you a second to read it there. So again, that's item two, that's in the amendment matrix. And we're calling it item 2A there on the screen. And we'll, we'll actually do the other one really quick. And then if you have any questions on either of these, we'll take those and then we'll, we'll wrap up the staff portion of this program here this evening. So the next one is actually a clarification to item 10 that was in exhibit two in your packet. And this, a couple of council members actually brought this to us. And going back and looking at the tape from April 9th, we didn't quite get this right the first time when the packet was published. So we've doubled back here and added some additional language. This is the rounding up amendment and making it clear that additional units for rounding up will be, will follow the appropriate sections of existing code related to affordable housing. So that's what we've done there. Again, that language is in green.
So Jeff, one nuance here as well that was on that tape is the, when I went back to watch it, it was the fractions I thought were separated out for short and long plats. I mean, we can always have that discussion up here. But we had talked about .71 and then .61 got thrown out at one point. But I think what was stated was that .71, that we can have that discussion up here.
So I think in, in the first yellow highlighted section there for subdivisions, I think we've got the .51.
Oh, you do, .71. I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the fractions just above. Okay, you've got it. You're right.
Okay.
It's correct.
Yep. So we'd be happy to take any questions on either of these items. If you have any questions now.
I think we do. I know I do. And it looks like Councilmember Stewart does as well. Go ahead.
Thanks, Jeff. On 10A, I don't recall that the affordable housing unit had to be a duplex. So I'm still struggling on the affordable housing unit duplex. I thought we just said that you would get additional.
You had to use the provisions provided in the code already. That's, that's what we had stated. So it didn't have to be a duplex or a townhouse.
Right, so I think that they can get two affordable housing units. They can choose to make it a duplex, but they don't have to make it a duplex, correct?
It just has to follow whatever the existing code states for affordable housing. So we talked about them not being a, a whole number. They were a half. So I don't know if that, if that in code says it has to be a duplex or not.
So David Pyle, quick question for you. Are you intending then to mean that in the event that say, on a long plat, you, you were achieving 10.85 units of density, that then you could build 10 market rate standard detached residential units and one affordable unit as the bonus unit that you would achieve?
Two, I think.
It would technically, if it's following our code, it would be two. Because they, as you guys explained it to us last time, if they follow the provision that's already existing in code for, and I don't think it was, I don't know if you defined it as low income or affordable, but it, you were saying it only counted as a half of a dwelling unit. So two halves would be the whole. So you'd be able to build two, correct?
In the, in the event of a duplex, a duplex that is in the form of an affordable unit is given the treatment of only counting as a one unit.
Okay.
So, so that's why we included the duplex in here and it.
I'm still stuck, sorry.
So what, the way the code works and, and what it does is it routes you through the use table section. And then there's a footnote under the use table section for duplexes. And that section identifies that duplexes are allowed in, in all zones when they're designed in accordance with, and there's a section that it cites. And then it goes on to say that duplexes that meet the affordable housing requirements of, and then it incites this section here, the 21B section that we've included, are only counted as one unit. So if you were trying to build a duplex, you would, there was a market rate duplex. Say it wasn't part of a subdivision. Say you just had two units of density. You wanted to build a duplex. You, we would count each unit as one unit. So two units total, right? But, but if you were building in a duplex and met the affordable unit requirements, it would only count as one unit. Although there's actually two units of housing being provided.
So I guess what I'm not seeing here then is you're not really getting a bonus here, are you? I mean.
You're getting.
The bonus is the rounding.
Yeah, you're getting the round, right?
But you have to build it as a duplex.
Yes, that would be the case. Alternatively, you could say that if you wanted to round, the extra unit that you would be achieving through rounding would be built just as a standard affordable unit, meeting the affordable requirements.
Could we say that they could do it either way? I mean, they may always choose to do the duplex, but could we allow them to do it either way? So they could build 10 standard rate and one affordable single-family unit or one affordable duplex unit consisting of two affordable housing units? Could we do it either way and let them choose?
So what we would be saying then is that they could, I guess we're kind of getting, I'm getting lost here a little bit.
I know that feeling. So at 10.51, you get 10 afford, you get 10 standard rate or market rate units. If you want to be able to round up, it has to be affordable. And that affordable can come in one of two fashions. One affordable standalone single-family home or one affordable duplex, which actually has two housing units in it.
So the latter of those is already allowed by code?
So you don't have to add it in, I think, is what he's saying.
The duplex is already allowed. Right.
The standalone.
So I just want to change this because.
The standalone is already allowed by code. And the duplex, correct?
But what you, what it says here is that it has to be in the form of a duplex. And that's what I want the code to not say here.
And, and this is where the conversation got somewhat confusing. And I watched, admittedly, watched the tape about 10 times. And I could not come up with exactly what was being asked of us.
Sure.
So, so what, what, there's a couple of options here. One, one is the way it's written right now was seen as a way to ensure that affordable units are being provided. That if you want to round up, you got to build affordable units.
Correct.
If you wanted to change it slightly so that you said, if you want to round up, you have to either build an affordable unit, that extra unit you get is an affordable unit, or if you want to take advantage of other density incentives, you can do that. So what we would be saying is simply that any unit achieved must be an affordable unit, meeting the requirements of da, da, da. But what's already written into the code is if you wanted to build an affordable duplex, you could do that.
But the, the way this is written, right? The way this is written is you're saying that at 10.51, you get nine regular and one affordable duplex. Which, where I think what we're saying is it should be, you get 10 houses, 10, right? Because 10.51, you get 10 houses, right? If you want to be able to round up and get that 11th, it can either be an affordable single-family or an affordable duplex.
But we don't need to say the duplex because it's already allowed by code.
Okay. But either way, this one gives you nine plus one affordable, as opposed to 10 plus one affordable.
Yes.
With nine plus one affordable, you're not really getting a bonus. Because at 10.51, you already get 10. So this doesn't give you a rounding bonus, the way this is written. Unless I'm reading it wrong. But it says here, right? It says, "The calculation resulting in 10.51 would yield 10 single-family detached residential units or nine single-family detached residential units and one affordable housing units, unit duplex consisting of two affordable housing units." That.
And that's, that's the complexity.
But that doesn't yield 11. It says for a total of 11. But that, it's 10 structures. And so what I'm saying is that if, if we don't give them any rounding bonus, the way the code's written today, I already get to do nine plus a duplex. So this doesn't really give them any bonus. This doesn't give them any incentive to build additional affordable housing units using rounding. The way this is written is, is you get 10. And one of those you could build as a duplex if they're affordable. So there's no bonus, there's no rounding bonus here. Are you following my math, Kristi?
I can, so, so basically, what's, what's going on here is we're, we're commingling two different things. And really, we should pry those apart. So what we should be doing if we're trying to require that additional units provided be done in, as affordable units, but still allow rounding in the traditional sense. So if you were building a long plat and you came up with 10.51 units of density.
Right.
You would be either allowed to build 10 market rate units.
Yep.
Or you could build 10 market rate units plus one affordable unit.
Yes.
Or you could build 10 market rate units plus one affordable duplex, which would be the equivalent of two units.
Yes.
But it would be counted as one based on the current code provisions.
That's correct.
And I could rewrite that to say that. So the confusion was, is that there, there was direction to include duplexes, but also direction to include affordability. And that's when we start to commingle those, it gets complicated because of other sections of the code.
Fair enough. I think, I think the idea, at least from my perspective, the idea was you only get to get a bonus to round up if you build affordable units. So at 10.51, you get 10 units, right? Or you get, right? And one of those could be a duplex that's affordable because that's part of the code. But if you want to take that 11th unit, so to speak, it's got to be affordable. That's the only way you get to round up.
And if you wanted to take that 11th unit and make it an affordable duplex.
You can do that.
It would only count as one unit.
Yep.
I got a lot of lights on. Councilmember Hornish.
So if, if we were to make that rounded up additional unit only as a duplex, we'd get more affordable housing, right?
This, so this is one of the complexities of the conversation, is it depends how you define affordable. So there was one group that was defining affordable on the council as something that's not a 4,000 square foot home, that's a market rate home, right? A duplex in itself might be considered as diversity in housing and provides some affordability.
But not affordable under the definition.
Right.
Exactly. So that's why we wrote it the way we wrote it, where we included it in the original packet. And then we, we tried to then mold together the two affordability as defined and the duplex. So it depends on whether you're interested in housing diversity or whether you are interested in true affordable housing under the definition of affordable housing.
And I, and I think that's where I'm at, which is what you have drafted to give it only the rounding for the truly affordable duplex.
Except this doesn't give the rounding bonus to make it affordable. This, the way it's written doesn't change the existing code today. At 10.51, you get 10 units. One of those could be an affordable duplex, right?
And if they want another one, they can do another one.
If you want to round up to 11, right? So what, what the intention was that we're going to give people the ability to round up to 11 if they build additional, only if it's additional affordable. So this doesn't give you any rounding bonus. This just gives you 10, as, as it does today.
So, so Councilmember Stewart, you're actually correct. This, now that we've spent 10 minutes vetting this through, that first section, the, that's up on the screen, the B, should actually read, if you go the fourth line down, "For example, a subdivision proposal with a density calculation of 10.51 would yield 10 single-family detached units or 10 single-family detached units and one affordable housing duplex consisting of two units for a total of 12." That's actually what that should read, so.
And do, but do we always have to, do we always have to make them duplexes for affordability? That's what I'm asking.
Well, so that's, that's what David just hit on, that Councilmember Hornish just, just brought up is, David provided, we could add an additional menu option to that, which would be you could have 10 plus one affordable unit for a total of 11.
Yes.
You could have 10 market rate for 10.
Yep.
10 market rate plus just one standalone single-family affordable for 11. Or you could have 10 market rate, one duplex for 12.
Which is two units. Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, you get two.
Right, but I think we should give the menu because I think it kind of depend, that gives more flexibility depending on what the lot looks like and what is needed.
I'd rather give the incentive, I guess, since we're not on lights right now. So I'll talk.
Yeah, well, yes, let's use our lights.
I'd rather give the incentive to have them get two units.
So if we want to do something with this.
So this language, we, we can, what we've just discussed, we're very clear on here. So that change can definitely be made, so. Depending on what the council would like to do, whether you want to provide the three menu choices or only the two menu choices.
So Jeff, is it easier for, for you to keep track of any changes that we're making here? If we go motion by motion here, make a motion to do whatever with this? And then, once we've got it all packaged together and then make one final motion to pass the entire thing?
Yep.
Okay.
Let's do that.
So if somebody wants to make a motion on this, we can move this one forward. Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
So I move, I just want to double check B and make sure that we've got the math. I think B also has to be altered in the same way as, or C needs to be altered in the same way as B. So I, I move that we alter this based on Jeff's description of the three menu options. And again, the definition of affordable is a strict definition. It already exists. It is not just a random statement. There is a strict definition on what affordable means.
Correct. And so for the second, or I guess the second highlighted yellow section on your screen.
Yep.
You are correct. So the math would be modified to be correct, which would be fourth line down, 4.71 would yield four single-family detached residential units or, as the language reads, four single-family detached and one affordable duplex for a total of six units.
And just for clarification, again, of those four that I have, I could at any point turn one of them into an affordable duplex, separate from the rounding, correct? Because that's what's written in the code today.
Yep.
So, so I could, right?
Can we restate this one more time so that I'm absolutely crystal clear on this? So what's happening under item C, for example, is we would be saying that if you were achieving 4.71 or greater in, in the fraction, that you would be eligible to round up and that you would be achieving four standard units.
Yep.
And then the unit achieved through the .71 or greater in rounding would either be one affordable unit standalone.
Yep.
Or an affordable duplex.
Correct.
So those are the three different options.
Yes.
That does not preclude you, and we'll leave that statement in there from applying the, the density bonus provisions of other sections in the code.
Perfect.
So that's that same statement about the fact that others could be duplexes, et cetera. They're affordable duplexes, yeah.
That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Did you want to speak anymore?
I think we got it.
You feel like you've had your piece there? Okay. Deputy Mayor Moran. Okay, Councilmember Hornish.
Yeah, I still think that does not provide the incentive I want to give to somebody if they want to round up and build the extra unit. I want to have it as a duplex to provide more affordable housing. So I think that's kind of a disincentive. It, it does give some, but I think without having that third option is better because it gives more.
Deputy Mayor Moran. So Jeff, I have a question because we have a, a definition for affordable. Could you please give the council what that definition is so that we understand? I mean, my understanding is that if we're building single-family homes that are, you know, 4,200 square feet, we're charging $1.6 million. But if we build a duplex, we've got two that might be.
But if we build a duplex, we've got 2 that might be $600,000.
Yep.
But what is our definition of affordable?
David's bringing it up here, as we speak on the screen, so we'll make sure we get it exactly right for you.
While he's doing that, I think the Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Hornish have a point, which is, if the idea is to produce additional housing that's more affordable than what we're seeing up here, a duplex might provide that. But I am interested to hear what the definition is. I'm assuming it's AMI-related.
So here, in Section 21B.75.060, "Affordable housing unit" means housing reserved for occupancy by eligible households and affordable moderate-income households, adjusted for household size, and no more than 30% of the monthly household income is paid for monthly housing
And then there's a... Further down, there's the moderate income is defined in 2.
Yep. 80% of King County median income.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart.
So I'm all for more houses, but I guess I just don't think that we, 1, in terms of the lots and how they play out, it may make more sense for it to be single-family, based on things like character. And also, I think that people who are looking for affordable housing, who are in the 80% of the median income range, should not only be relegated to necessarily duplexes, that we should be providing affordable single-family homes as well. So again, in terms of housing diversity, leaving that as a menu option for developers to build that, I think, is appropriate. Because I think that if you have a larger family, and you need one, or need a single-family home, I don't think that anyone looking for affordable housing should have to live in a duplex.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. Question for you guys, staff. Are we just trying to make this a little bit more simple, if I can, just to try and understand? Councilmember Hornish's perspective is, don't provide the option of a single-family home, and if I'm wrong, Tom, please correct me. If single-family... Don't provide an option of a single-family, affordable single-family home, 80% of King County AMI. But provide duplex only. So don't provide that 3rd option. And Councilmember Stewart is saying, provide that option of an 80% AMI, King County AMI, for a 3rd option. Is that... Did I break that down the right way?
That's a good summary.
Okay. So that's one or the other. And right now, the option, the motion is to include that 3rd option, and a vote yea is to include that 3rd option, and a vote against is to not include that 3rd option.
Correct.
What vote against right now would be to not amend the code at all. We'd have to have another motion to amend the code.
Okay. Gotcha.
How is 1 family is a yea? How is 2 families, or no? Okay.
Wait, say that again? No.
No, that's what it is. Boils down to, yeah.
Okay. I'm curious as to why you think... I'm trying to understand the rationale. You think they won't build the... Well, I'm just curious. Yes, actually.
I want to go back to, if you recall, the reason we put rounding up at these fractions, as provided by the Planning Commission, was because we were going to not round at all.
Right.
But we said, oh, wait a minute. If we can give some incentives by rounding up something, then the developer gets the extra ability to do another unit. And in this context, we can actually make it 2, and house 2 families...
Right.
If it's a duplex.
Right.
But if you only give them the option to build 1 more unit, because they get to round up, if it's affordable, that's not where we started about rounding down, and not being able to round up at all.
Right.
It's still affordable. That single-family unit's still affordable. It still has to be defined as affordable.
Right. I think the point is, is how many people are going to have an affordable unit? Is that...
The more people will have... You'll have more affordable units available if you give the incentive to round...
Do the duplex.
If you do a duplex, if you round... If you want to round up, you must do an affordable duplex. You'll get more affordable duplexes. Presumably.
Councilmember Ritchie, your light is still on here. It never went off, so I think Councilmember Stewart's got you on that one.
Actually, it did, but that's okay. So if I can, I just want to clarify. What I... I guess my concern here is that this is, we as government are basically telling developers and homeowners what kind of home, affordable home, they can have. It's not that we're taking away duplexes, is that we're... I think that, as far as I can read, what we're trying to do here, is that we're trying to create an option for a building developer, or neighborhood developer, to look at a plat and say, "What fits in here?" I mean, this is kind of like almost the heavy hand of government, saying, "You have to build a duplex here, and you don't have a choice." Whereas, that may not fit. And I think it's important to recognize that in a private land ownership, or private development, they should have more options than that. If they want to build there, then we're creating an opportunity for them to make a choice. And I mean, I... Do I prefer a duplex? I don't know that it matters what I prefer. I would think that that's the neighborhood character. We're creating affordable housing, and we're creating opportunities for housing diversity, if it fits the neighborhood character. Whereas, if we impose, the government imposing its will, on a private business, or a developer, saying, "You have to build these kinds of houses, period, full stop, if you want the rounding bonuses," I just think that seems a little heavy-handed to me. So I support trying to create opportunities for there to be affordable housing, and leaving it up to the developer to either take advantage of that bonus or not, with whatever fits into that neighborhood build.
Councilmember Stewart. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. That's fine.
So, you know, in the spirit of compromise, I'm certainly willing to go with the duplexes. I just feel like, you know, dictating that people who make 80% of AMI are only allowed, you know, we're only going to let them live in... We're only going to create affordable homes in the form of duplexes. Again, I do think that seems heavy-handed, but in the spirit of compromise, if that's the only thing you guys are willing to go for, I'm willing to meet you halfway. But I just think that, you know, as a family, as a set of parents who are making that, and trying to provide for their families here, they should have options. If, in fact, the builders do that, they may pick the duplexes anyway, because they'll make more money. Who knows? But I just don't think that we should sit up here and tell people, "The only affordable homes we're going to give you are duplexes."
So I think we're stuck on the ridge here a little bit, on this one, on something that's probably, in all likelihood, a fairly minor component of this overall update that we're doing. The good news, I do have good news for you, buried in all of this. The good news is that, as Councilmember Hornish just reminded us a few minutes ago, where this conversation started was not doing any rounding, right? So if the council would like to find it within yourselves to move forward with that duplex option, as, more or less, as written here on the item 10A, why don't we do this? We'll come back to you, perhaps, starting with the form of an email in a year, and we'll let you know how many units were actually constructed, using this provision. And if we need to take a look at it at a subsequent phase of the development code updates, to revisit the issue, if we hear from our customers that they'd like something different than what's contained in there now with this duplex option...
That's good.
We can do that, and we'll let you know how we're doing. And we can certainly have that follow-up conversation at that time.
When would you come back with the data? A year?
Well, I think you'd want to do 12 months, to give it a fair chance to, you know, to work one way or the other, right?
And get feedback, too.
David's going to put it on his calendar, when he leaves here tonight. And we'll follow up with you. We'll let you know how we're doing, and we can pursue it again if we need to.
So I have a question, and a statement. One is that duplexes are not the only thing that we can give to people, because there is a provision within the town center that will provide them something other than a duplex, at 80% of AMI currently. So there is, you know, there are other options within the town center. But I do have a question on the duplex. Do we get a credit for 1 or 2 dwelling units, under the Growth Management Act targets, for a duplex?
That would be 2.
Yes.
2 dwelling units. Right answer.
Okay. I'm sold.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart.
So, again, I just want to ask, so in the town center, there are provisions, but again, those are going to be in the form of apartments, condos, or townhouses. So we're not going to try to incentivize any affordable single-family homes in the city. That's what I hear you guys saying, that you don't want...
We have 10 being constructed right now.
10.
It's better than 0.
10. I just want you to... I just want everybody up here, myself included, to think about how much our houses are worth, for just a moment, and then consider whether or not we should be having any provisions for any incentives for single-family homes, other than 10.
But wait a minute. We do have incentives in the town center.
That's what I said.
For single families. Right? Those are all going to be multi-unit.
Or that's a multi... Well, not single families, no. But I mean, that's a duplex or apartment.
That's what I'm saying, is that this is an opportunity for us to incentivize builders to build affordable, single-family homes. Not duplexes, not townhouses, not condos. It's just...
Can't have it both ways. Sorry.
What? I'm sorry. I don't know what that means.
You've got to come to grips with reality, as to what's affordable for the families that are making those incomes. And in Sammamish, that's probably going to be a duplex or an apartment.
Except we have an opportunity to incentivize them to build a single-family home. We could put that as an option out there.
You keep talking about 80%. We're talking about affordable, which is not 80%, right? That's the moderate income.
We just looked at the definition. It's, you pay 30... You pay no more than 30% of your income to housing, for an income of 80% of AMI. That's what the definition is. So they would have to set the price point that would fall into that.
That was the... That was what David had on the screen. That was the moderate.
I thought the moderate had the 80% of AMI.
That was the moderate.
It's 80% of AMI.
Fucking affordable, when we're talking...
30%. So the home value can't be more than 30% of your income at 80% AMI.
Right. But it's not 80%.
Okay. We've got a bantering going back and forth, and we're not using our lights, so I think we have a motion on the floor, and we need to vote on it. And that motion is, we have 3 menu items. It is the 3 menu items, so that's not the duplex thing that's here in the code. That's the additions that Councilmember Stewart added in.
It's the duplex, and another option.
And the standalone affordable unit.
Right.
Single... Okay. All those in favor of the 3 menu options, say aye.
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 We may need to raise hands, too.
Chris. How about Romero?
Opposed?
Wait, do we have Romero?
He's not on the phone anymore. He's gotten off.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. Motion fails.
I didn't know we lost Romero. Did he hang up, or he just...
He said he had another meeting to go to. So he got off. That's the message that I got. Okay. We need another motion if we're going to pass this, though.
Can we table this, all this, till Romero?
Can we use our lights?
Really?
Councilmember Hornish.
I'd like to move that we adopt the proposed regulation as on the screen.
No, the math is wrong.
Oh, with the amended math. I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Councilmember Ritchie?
No, I'll wait. Thanks.
Okay. Any more discussion? Councilmember Stewart?
I don't know. I know we're not supposed to ask, but I want to make sure that Councilmember Hornish understands the affordable housing definition.
We just saw it.
So, it's people who are making 80% AMI. The housing price has to be set at 30, that you would spend no more than 30% of your household income, and your household income is 80% of AMI. So, what we're saying, what we'd be saying is that the developer would have to build a home that fell into that price point.
I understand.
Okay. And you just don't want that to be an option in Sammamish?
I understand.
Okay.
Councilmember Ross?
Yeah. And I supported the last motion adding the third menu item because frankly, I don't think it's for, the builder will build it. So, this more aligns with the market reality. So, I'll support this one.
Okay. All those in favor of the regulation as written with the amended math, say aye. And raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. By a vote of 5-1, that passes. So, we've got one down.
Okay. So, hopefully, this one will go a little bit smoother, because it was meant to smooth the language out.
Yes. Oh. I think before we jump, Councilmember Ritchie has got his light on. Go ahead.
Jeff, I apologize for the interruption.
No.
In light of Romero not being here and the importance of these regulations, before I make my motion to table, what timeframe would we be looking at if we tabled this motion for a date certain, specifically next week, when we could potentially get our seventh council member on the phone, or maybe even here?
Um...
Does that screw up your process?
I'd have to look at the, well, this process is possibly near an end. So, I...
Did you, I mean... Did you...
Councilmember Ritchie, are you done?
Well, I'm going to come back to it. I'm trying to get some information as to whether or not a table makes sense, so we can get Councilmember Valderrama back into play. Between concurrency and development regulations, this is the two big things we're doing. And it seems, I didn't know he wasn't here.
Didn't know he was here.
And I think it's important that he is here for this topic. I don't know how he's going to vote on any of these things. I don't care, but I think he's got a voice. And I think it's important that if we're not in a rush, if we're not up against a hard deadline, like we are with the concurrency regs and, you know, that whole thing, are we up against a hard deadline that could be moved without there being some major, you know, hole in the concurrent, or in the development process that would, does buying us a week do anything other than giving Romero time to get here? Let me ask that.
Well, so, everything else in the entire package, council seemed to be in, not, pardon the pun, concurrence on, on April 9th. So, there was these two additional items that, one was on David and I, the one that we just got done with, because we should have nailed that a little bit more clearly in the packet materials. This one is a very minor subsequent item. So, I mean, I would characterize your April 9th study session, which I thought was very productive, as getting all the council members on the same page with everything else.
Jeff, you've been doing this a long time. You know there's motions coming, there's amendments coming. It'd be wonderful if we all sat on number one, but I, just from conversations I've had with fellow councilmembers, there are other, there's other things coming. So, again, if we do table this now, does that corrupt your process in terms of getting this done before some deadline? And if so, what deadline is it?
So, that's new news to me, what you just brought up, Councilmember Ritchie. So, if there are, in fact, hidden items that are going to come out after we finish with this item, that's something we probably need to talk about, that we're not going to be able to identify a date on tonight.
Okay.
That is more or less option three. That was in the agenda bill, which was framed as denying the ordinance. But the equivalent to that would be bringing out items, I mean, staff has been on, sitting on this for 28 days since April 9th. And other than this one item that's up on the screen right now, that I was apprised of on Monday morning, which I would characterize as being very minor, I've heard nothing else from anybody else about additional amendments. So, if we're going to start taking up new amendments that David and I are not aware of at this point in time, you can tell us what those are after we get done with this item, and then I'll tell you how long it's going to take.
I appreciate that. I'll wait. I won't make my motion. Let's see how this whole thing transpires. Thank you.
If I can get your, yeah, thank you. Okay. So...
So, I've got nothing else on this. So, if you'd like to proceed.
We need a motion if we want to. And I think I have a question here, though. What are the implications of this specifically? I mean, I can guess in my head, but apply that onto a project for me. What does that look like with this addition?
So, what this primarily is focused on is a development not being required to export material out of the city on city roads. There's a lot of impact that goes along with exporting materials in terms of traffic, in terms of damage to the streets, dirt on the streets, et cetera. So, what this is doing is it's saying, hey, if a builder is attempting to grate out of sight, and they need to move dirt from one side to another, and it's not impacting tree protection areas, and it's not being done in the required setback areas, so they're blending the edges, and any fill that's, or excavation that's in excess is being engineered, and they're proving that it's the minimum necessary through an engineering analysis, then we would allow a deviation the minimum necessary to achieve that balance. Now, that doesn't mean that they're not going to export zero fill...
It minimizes it.
Or zero excavation material. They're going to minimize it.
Okay.
You know, they're, we're looking at, you know, when we're looking at like 200,000 yards of material being moved, and maybe they're going to be able to balance out 170 of that and only have to export 30 of that?
Sure.
That's a big deal.
Yep. Makes perfect sense. Okay. Councilmember Hornish?
Move to adopt as on the screen.
Second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. By a vote of 6-0, this one will move forward. So, those were the two changes. Do you need us to then package all this together?
We got one more.
Okay. Hold on. Hold on. Do we have another to go through?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay.
Oh.
So, that's right. So, we do have Mary's, Mary's...
I have my light on.
...additions that she, she had had that suggestion of changing from four to five, five to four. Excuse me.
I got my light on.
Okay. So, could you walk us through this? I know we talked just prior to the meeting, but can you just kind of walk us through what this looks like?
Yeah.
Or her changes, her suggested changes here?
So, what she's speaking to is that we have a gap in our code, so to speak, by a foot, where we require engineering for rockeries over four feet in height. We require a permit for rockeries or other walls of four feet, but we only require a permit for excavation of five feet. So, someone might be cutting five feet, and they're not required to get a permit. But if they're building a wall of four feet, they're required to get a permit, as I understand it. So, the idea here is that we would want to true that up, so that if you make a four-foot cut, you got to put back an engineered wall. You have to address the edge effect that's being created. It's simply a matter of changing a number from five to four. Other cities do regulate to four feet, not five. This is one we had anticipated grabbing in Phase Two. As Phase Two, there's going to be some code adjustments. We're going to look for inconsistencies. So, that's where we had intended putting it. I did talk to Mary this afternoon. She said that if, you know, if it's not included, we definitely want to include it in Phase Two. The other item that is listed in her email regarding permits for critical areas, for any clearing or grating, is already in the code that you're looking at now.
Right. Assuming we adopt that. So, this is, I would hope, then, this is a fairly minor edit, as far as you're concerned, and this doesn't cause any issue on your end.
This is a minor edit. The only issue here is that it wasn't included in the packet to date, although Mary did identify it in public comment, I believe during the public hearing, and I believe also going as far back as the Planning Commission public hearing.
Okay. So, I'd entertain a motion if anyone wants to move this.
I'd like to, if I may, with my light on. So, I would like to move that we amend the code per Mary's suggestion to remove the discrepancy between the four feet and the five feet.
Second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Do we need any further discussion?
Mary covered it.
Uh, Councilmember Hornish?
No, I'm sorry.
Good. Okay. All those in favor of those edits, changing it from five feet to four feet, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. By a vote of 6-0, we will make those changes. Councilmember Hornish?
I'd like to move that we adopt the ordinance as drafted in our package.
As amended.
As amended. To relate, that relates to the development regulations regarding the design and construction of short plats and subdivisions, amending and repealing certain sections and subsections of the code. I'm not going to read them. And terminating the interim development regulations, and a couple miscellaneous.
Second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. By a vote of 6-0, we are completed with it. Okay.
Thank you, Steph.
Yes. That was a heavy lift, and we know there's another one coming.
Thank you.
Okay. So, under new business, we have council reports. I'm not going to read my report. It's there for you to read. I think the only thing of note is PIC is tomorrow. It's an odd week, just based on the way the days felt. I have not received any emailed feedback on the PIC packet, but if anyone wants to provide any here for me to bring forward to PIC tomorrow? Okay. Seeing none. There's only one action item tomorrow, and it's an appointment to, I can't remember what the appointment was. And I don't, we, the names are in the PIC packet that I sent you, and isn't my report. So, that's just something that the PIC does as a formality, and then goes to the board for finalization. So, Councilmember Stewart?
If you're done with your report, I'm just, I have one, so...
Oh, yes.
Are you, are you finished?
Go ahead. Yep. I'm completing.
So, in the spirit of your report, I liked how you included the request, I think we all received it, the request for the wear orange. So, in that same vein, I've been asked if we would make a proclamation, as we did last year, and I think as we have in years past, for June is Pride Month. And so, if we could, on the 21st, add to the agenda a pride proclamation, declaring June Pride Month, and also, in the same vein, as lighting up City Hall in orange, we've been provided with a flag, and our neighboring cities will be flying the pride flag at City Hall for the month of June. So, do I need a motion for that? Or is that something we can just all agree to?
We've always done Pride Month, so I don't think that's a big deal.
Right.
We usually just do all the same.
So, if we can just add that, if we can direct staff to just add that to the 21st agenda, that would be great. Thank you.
Anything else? We're good?
That is it.
Uh, Councilmember Ritchie?
Nope. My light's not on.
Oh, no. I'm just going to go down the line if anyone had a report.
Nope. No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Ross?
I went to Eastside Fire 101, and boy...
Fireground 101?
Fireground 101.
Yeah.
And with Eastside firefighters, and it was incredible. I was so sore afterwards. I was fully geared up, oxygen masks, everything. We did a fire room. It struck me how dark it gets in a fire simulation. It's pretty frightening, and you really get incoherent, really quick, lose your place in the building. So, that in itself is impressive. We did a break-in demonstration. We actually broke in. EMS, that was really enlightening about EMS. Sometimes people wonder, why is there so many responders at a house? And they do what's called Quality CPR, which is, they rotate every two minutes, and it's very, very labor-intensive, and you get very tired very quick. And so, you literally are choreographing different personnel, taking turns doing the CPR, keeping the rhythm, and doing the shock treatment if it's a heart attack, et cetera, et cetera. And it does take a lot of personnel. One firefighter said he took up to two hours before they were able to get him to the hospital. So, think of two-minute intervals for two hours. If you only had two or three people, they wouldn't have made it. So, that's why they have five or more people, why they have multiple responders. Very, very educational. And the most fun was the Jaws of Life.
Yeah.
Tore apart a car. And that was pretty impressive. So, no, I, it was very, I just gained an enormous amount of respect for the firefighters, the men and women in Eastside Fire, and that really hit home. It also hit home from an equipment standpoint. It's a lot of state-of-the-art equipment. Like, they now have battery-operated Jaws of Life, so they don't have to set it up with hydraulics, so they can quickly administrate aid to extract injured people out of cars. So, it was a great day spent on Saturday, and I just can't say any more nice things about Eastside Fire.
Deputy Mayor Moran?
Well, first thing, I went to the Eastside Catholic, and I got to see the play that they put on this year, which was the Adams family. It was fabulous. And then, the second thing is, while Chris was off playing and having FUD, I actually got to go play as well. And I was with the CERTS crew that was, CERTS class from the spring for Sammamish. And so, I was down for their testing, and was able to help down there that morning. And I'm very excited that they'll be here next week, because they'll be handed their certificates and stuff. And being involved from the CERTS program, and being involved for a few years now, I'm very excited. I'm always happy to see people come through that program.
Councilmember Hornish?
No report.
So, I, one thing, and maybe our two councilmembers that are on the legislative committee might be able to comment, but I, so I called in and listened to it, and they are going to start in June, planning for whatever our priorities might be for the 2020 session. So, that will, I think they're skipping the next meeting. Is that right? And then, starting in June, start looking towards what priorities will ultimately be for the...
So, yeah. So, we asked the, our lobbyists to kind of get together with us and help us frame something up to bring to council that says, sort of, here's a schedule, here are some things. And again, not just looking at the state legislature, but looking at other entities like King County, of things that we want to advocate for, we want help in figuring out a plan for. So, we were going to get together, kind of frame something up, bring it to council, show you what we're framing up, get your input on what your ideas and suggestions are, and then go back and work out a plan on that. We won't, we've been meeting every other week, so we're not going to meet that frequently now. But because it, we have this opportunity to do some heavy lifting now in the offseason, if you will, before the next legislative session, we thought we should still take advantage of that lobbyist time and put that together. So, if you have ideas you want us to include there, that's great. If not, we'll bring sort of a framework to you for you to give us ideas, suggestions, input, and then we'll, you know, kind of work that out. And everything we do, we'll bring back to the council as a whole to determine, you know, sort of priority order, those types of things. But we'll try to do some of that work in the committee. So, I...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I actually want to give kudos, I think it's Jason, you were the one that came in here to say, we need to get lobbyists. We saw a great result, and I hope everybody's familiar. It has paid back...
Yeah.
Pretty big ROI.
Whatever. Yeah. The ROI is just phenomenal. So, I am saddened that we weren't doing the lobbyists before, but thank you, Jason, and nice job. It really has paid off for the city.
Agreed. Yeah. I received, and it's in my council report, but I received a call from Senator Mark Mullet, and he complimented Sammamish specifically on getting a head start. And he says traditionally, the legislative committee always contacted them while they're already in session. And he was like, it's a little late then. So, he thought, you know, the position that we took this year was better. And so, it was a very nice call. I appreciated getting the call from him, just kind of letting us know that he was really happy to advocate for Sammamish down in Olympia. So, that was a very nice call. But, Councilmember Stewart, I did want to ask you one question, too. It was something that was at the legislative committee. You had mentioned specifically with Sound Transit. So, it sounds like maybe you're having meetings with Sound Transit? And I was hoping you might be able to inform the rest of the council, maybe, on those conversations?
Sure. So, I meet with them regularly, just like reach out to lots of different partners. So, I just sit down and have coffee with them. They are on our calendar right now for, I think, our first study session in June, where they will be bringing forward, if that schedule holds, but will be bringing forward the various sites that they intend to dive deeper on. So, they assessed a bunch of sites across Sammamish for the park and ride. They want to narrow that down, because obviously, the next level of assessment will be much more intensive, time-consuming, costly. So, they want that to be only sites that they feel are really, have a good chance of being ones of those. And then, they'll also share with us what their plans and schedules are. They have a whole plan for, which I haven't seen, but they will have a whole plan for community outreach, you know, kind of what that assessment will be, and how they plan to move forward between now. And I think it's sometime late in the fall that they want to be able to make the site selection, something to that effect. So, I don't know all the details, but they just kind of sketched it out high-level, saying, you know, that they're making progress, they're working with staff. I think there's a, an event coming up, a transit event. So, they'll have like a bus here, and they'll be showing people how to, you know, pay the fares, the various ways they can pay fares, and things like that, to get people familiar with the bus. And that's an event coming up here in the city in the next couple of weeks. I know it's on the calendar. I don't remember the date, so...
So, you may want to loop in staff on these meetings that you're having as well? Because I had mentioned it at our agenda meeting, and they had no idea that the meetings were going on. So, if we can just, if you're meeting with them regularly, if you can update us, and then staff as well, I think that kind of helps keep everybody on the same page.
Okay.
Yeah. Good. I've got some lights on here.
I mean, it's just a casual outreach.
Okay. No, I know. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same sheet of music. And it's good to hear that those meetings are going on, and that we're, it's good to get that feedback loop, so... Deputy Mayor Moran?
Well, I'm going to go backwards to our lobbyists, and I'm, I think they did an excellent job this year. And, but, one of the things that happened was that we had, we had talked about they were going to come to us halfway through the year, or whatever, and we never got to see them again. And so, I would like to propose, and however this works out again, but propose that the, you know, when they do come out, that they talk to the council as a whole, and we give our input as a whole, and actually talk with these folks, because otherwise, we really never see them. And that is in the future. That is not how I'd like to deal with the lobbyists.
Just so you're in their defense, they were in Olympia, like, until last week.
Oh, I know.
And they stayed in Olympia.
Oh, no. I was anticipating we were going to see them before they headed to Olympia, but, so...
So, maybe during that course, during June, when you guys take those kind of first steps During June, when you guys take those kind of first steps in, maybe that's an opportunity to have the full council involved early on.
Why don't we talk to them and figure out... June might be preliminary, because I don't know that we'll have something really to present, but I think your feedback is well-taken, and we'll talk to them and schedule something to come to the full council before the next session. I think that's fair feedback. I just... I want to make sure that if they come here, that it's productive time.
Councilmember Stewart, did you have anything additional?
I actually had a question for Councilmember Ross. I know, I think it was last month, the Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting, were you able to attend that? And I know there's another one coming up this Friday. There was discussion on email, Jason had... Or Councilmember Ritchie had said he was unable to make it. I was going to go, but you said you were the alternate, so I... No, because you said, no, I'm the alternate. And I said... And I sent you an email back and said, okay, you know, let me know if you need me to attend, but if you're the alternate, I assume you're going, so I didn't know.
It's... Jason sent an email, saying he can't attend.